Everyone, to our inaugural meeting of City Council for Monday, November 9th, 2020. The inaugural meeting after the by-election that was held in October that saw the election of new councillor, councillor Dober. And this morning, it's our pleasure to welcome a number of guests. And we'll proceed with the inaugural meeting and swearing in of councillor Dober. So our first order of business this morning is our blessing, and we have Pastor Terry Hagan here this morning, the Vice President of the Dawson Creek Ministerial Association, to perform the blessing. Good morning, Pastor, welcome, and we'll pass it over to you.
Good morning, everyone. It's an honor to be here this morning. I thank you for the invitation to do this blessing this morning. I have a short prayer that I would like to share with the council before we offer the blessing. Let us power into prayer. I'd first like to thank City Council for the invitation to extend the blessing to a new council member. I'm honored to do that on behalf of the Dawson Creek Ministerial Association. And Pastor Terry Hagan and I serve St. James Presbyterian Church here in Dawson Creek. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for your many blessings, and thank you for life itself. For the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us for your boundless and gracious nature. In Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city councils and officials, and in particular for this assembled council today. Amen.
And Darcy, I have this blessing for you. Almighty God, we give you thanks for the many and varied ways in which through supportive prayer, the needs of our community can be fulfilled. We ask for your blessing upon our newly-elected councillor, Darcy Dober. Grant that he may be of faithful service to this community and bring honor and glory to your name. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Pastor Hagan, thank you so much for being here this morning. We appreciate it. And now it's my pleasure to call up councillor Dober to the center stage. And we have with us also this morning the Honorable Judge Tamara Golinski, who's going to look after the swearing-in ceremony. It's always a little bit nervous when you hear the judge indicate that she's very familiar with the new councillor. And so, we'll just leave it at that, I assume. So, it's really a pleasure to be able to have this this morning. And so if you'd like to join the center, we'll have the swearing-in.
Well, it is a true pleasure for me to do this for you, Mr. Dober. I'm sure that everyone's aware of Darcy's fine standing in the community. I've known him as a wonderful parent and father, and a wonderful businessman, and a real commitment to our community. So I just can't think of anybody better to add to this fine group. So, if he could please read the oath.
Okay. I, Darcy Dober, do solemnly affirm that I am qualified to hold the office of councillor for the City of Dawson Creek, to which I have been elected. I have not by myself or any other person knowingly contravened the local government, act respecting vote, buying, or intimidation in relation to my election to the office. I will faithfully perform the duties of my office and will not allow any private interest to influence my conduct in public matters. As required by the community charter, I will disclose any direct or indirect pecuniary interest I have in the matter, and will not participate in the discussion of matter, and will not vote in respect of the matter.
If you could sign where indicated there, please.
Right in front of you.
Oh, right here.
You get the fancy one.
You're gonna get used to fancy names, aren't you?
Yeah, you're gonna be hanging with us. Welcome to City Council, to your honor. Thank you for joining us this morning and helping preside over this and doing the swearing-in for Darcy. We appreciate you coming.
It was a real pleasure. Thank you very much. I better get back to sleep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you get to sit now. You get to do your business now.
You stay there for the rest of the day.
All downhill from here.
Yeah. Now the fun's over, the work begins.
Thank you.
We have a delegation this morning that's joining us, and it's our pleasure this morning to welcome Emily Burney, who wanted to be here this morning to assist in the swearing-in of Darcy. So, welcome, Mike. Good morning. Good to have you here this morning.
Oh, thanks. I didn't know I was a delegation.
Oh, it's formal here.
I should have dressed up as a delegation, but I don't have to anymore. Anyway, first of all, I want to congratulate Darcy. I remember, oh, I guess fifteen, whatever, years ago, when I was standing doing the exact same thing you were just doing, I was just reminiscing that he's, Darcy's actually sitting in the exact same chair that I sat in in 2005, when I was first elected as a city councillor, which was also right next to councillor Javatco. So some things do change and some things don't change. That's good to see. Again, your worship, thanks for allowing me just to say a few words again, congratulations, Darcy, and I'm looking forward to working with this new and biggerated council going forward. My future is somewhat halfed out for the next four years. As you know, the MLA elects. We still have a lot of things going on. As of yesterday, all the final counting took place, so we know at least from a PC Liberal and NDP perspective, whose government uses opposition. One judicial review is taking place in West Vancouver Sea to Sky, because it was within about forty votes that go down there, between the PC Liberal degrees, so we're ready to see on that how it's going to take place. So, I'm looking forward to my role going forward, representing with you in government for the next four years. I'm assuming four years with the majority government with the NDP, who have a very solid majority. So it's going to be an interesting time. I think it's also going to be a little bit more concrete when we have a majority government rather than a minority. So we know kind of where the cards are falling, and who we need to work with. So within the next three weeks, I'm told, we'll know the cabinets, and we move forward from there to find out what problems it's going to look like, and how it's going to shape up. So I'm looking forward, again, working with you, Darcy, and working with all of our council. I guess I have to call you councillor now.
Yeah.
So it'll be interesting ordering my beer and wings now, asking for a councillor. But anyway, congratulations again to the councillor, and looking forward to working with you going forward. And, your worship, as always, thanks for the great relationship. Looking forward to working with you to make sure the City of Dawson Creek continues to be representable.
Thank you so much, Mike. Thank you, and we appreciate you being here this morning, obviously, and it's a special meeting of council always when we have that inaugural. And congratulations. We look forward to the next four years, and appreciate, again, you being here today. Thank you. Next item, we have a couple of items we need to deal with. So reports, 20213 is the City Council appointments, and this is a result of the new councillor role, so I need a motion for the new appointments. Councillor Wilbur, second. Councillor Kemp, discussion. Required a couple of adjustments, obviously, with Darcy's new role, so we moved a few things around, but for the most part, it was pretty consistent from what was in the past. Any discussion, comments? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. And report number 20202 from the corporate officer regarding the Dawson Creek Library Board appointments. And again, it's a formal appointment by council.
It's a moment.
Councillor Wilbur, second. Councillor Kemp, any discussion? Councillor Kemp will continue on in the role of the council liaison on the library board. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. Congratulations. And report 20214 is the Peace River Regional District Legislative Appointment, and this is required by legislation, and so because councillor, past councillor Lechtrem was our NDIS representative, and councillor Parslow, the alternate, we moved councillor Parslow into the delegate for us, representing NDIS, and as a result, put councillor Dober on to as the alternate on the PRRD. So we need a motion for that appointment. Councillor Wilbur, second. Councillor Kemp, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. And obviously, we're, it seems a little bit ironic in some ways that we're here today welcoming a new councillor into the role for the city, as it was two years ago that we had the inaugural meeting of this city council, when the election was taking place in 2018. And so it is mid-year, it is midterm for this council, and, you know, I was reflecting back on it about a month ago in terms of all of the work that council has undertaken in this new role, and the additions to council with councillor Earl and councillor Kemp joining the board, and councillor Lechtrem at the time, I think, was newly back on. And so it's been amazing, when you think about it, that two years have gone by and all of the work that's been undertaken in regards to that strategic direction that council set, and all of the aspects to that. And then 2020 has been, I think, a year that'll go back in history, as being a year that nobody would have ever anticipated, that our city, our problems, our country, our world, would be impacted by a pandemic, that, a health pandemic, that would affect us so significantly in our daily routines and lives. So it's, honestly, it's really a positive day today for us to see council continue to move forward, and I look forward to the next two years with the new council and the new directions that we will obviously undertake, and continue with the work that council has undertaken to this point. So, appreciate the Judge Golinski, her honor being here today, and pastor, and the RCMP helping with the swearing-in ceremony in our inaugural meeting. With that, we'll adjourn the inaugural meeting if there's no further comments or business from council. Thank you. So we'll call to adjourn. Councillor Earl, councillor Wilbur, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. And so we'll take a, we have about forty-five minutes till we have our regular scheduled meeting, and so we're gonna do some photographs and get some of that early business done for the new council. Thank you, everybody. And it's a pleasure to welcome our new councillor, just sworn in this morning, councillor Dober. Welcome. And our first order of business this morning, we have delegations, and we have Mark Sutton and Jerry Randall are in attendance this morning to present to council from Dawson Creek Aircraft Limited in regards to the lease at sixty-four Vic Turner Drive, sorry, Vic Turner Road. And so good morning, Mark, and good morning, Jerry, welcome. And we have a couple of, Garnet and Larry are in the delegation as well, so welcome. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Good morning. Thank you for meeting with us, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lechtrem, council. I sent a report last week. I trust that you've all had a chance to have a look at it. We have concerns about, about the property. We would, we feel that it's really in the best interest of everyone to sell us the property, and as I've listed in the report. I do have a, just a correction to make. On the first page, I mentioned information I received was that it was formed in 1967, based on an aircraft rental. It was actually a group of individuals in the early sixties, and in 1967, they received professional advice that advised them to form a corporation to protect each of the shareholders in the event of a liability. So it was actually formed from a nonprofit organization, and then turned into a corporation simply for that reason. The property, it works, it needs some improvements. We've done comparables. I'm not sure what else really to say, other than, you know, the points I could go over the report, but if you've all looked at the report, it would be redundant. So at this point, if you have any questions for us, I'd be certainly willing and happy to answer them.
Good. Thank you, Mark. So council, any questions, comments? Councillor Earl?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you all for making a home visit with us today. Obviously, our report is a tremendously valuable asset here and a useful remedy, and one we all work to get the most out of, so it's sustainable over the long term. With respect to, I understand your preference is to purchase the land. I don't know if that's doable, based on a lot of advice we've gotten around looking forward and city planning, and what limitations that places on us as a city. Are you, are you guys amenable to entertaining a long-term lease? Is fifteen, your previous lease was, I guess you've got five years remaining in the existing one, but following that, I mean, a long-term lease, is that of any interest, or is it really just a purchase, or?
Ultimately, our first preference would be to purchase, because then there's zero uncertainty about any sort of improvements or capital that we, the shareholders, put into the building. A long-term lease would certainly be an option. Given that if purchase is not an option, our second option would be to renew the existing lease for the continued, there's actually two more five-year terms on the lease, as stated in the agreement, that we would certainly wish to pursue.
Thank you. Further comments, further questions from council? Councillor Javatco?
The insurance, do you have an insurance now that relieves the city from responsibility?
I believe so. We have a liability insurance policy that we take out every year as per part of the requirements of the lease. When it gets down to the, you know, who says what at the end of it all, it dumps to the insurance company, but yes, we do have an insurance policy.
The rate, the rental rate for the property, is it still the same as it was when the thing was issued?
No, it was, I have a letter here from 2015 that was addressed to Mr. Moffett, when he was the treasurer of the company. I can't speak to when the lease rate was first established. My colleagues might be able to. Every year, it does receive a two percent Consumer Price Index increase, regardless of what the economic factors are.
So you don't know what the rates, what the progression was?
No. Well, like, over the last ten years, it's been two percent per year, so it has gone up, you know, twenty percent compounded, whatever that works out to.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow?
I know there's a lot of history on this topic. Part of it was shared in, I think it was 2011, when the city had some study done on the development of the airport. And I know the recommendation, the advice given to council at that time was not to sell any property, any more property. In fact, it might have, and I'm just drawing on memory here, Mark, that it might have recommended that you try to buy that property that had been sold. I remember the issue on the approach to the airport from Bear Mountain, that, you know, we should have, there's height restrictions of buildings, et cetera, but there's been so much talk about the future potential of the airport, and I guess there's a variety of opinions about that. I, I know that a number of companies have come here, have tried to provide passenger service, and they believe we still have one, and the potential of another that's been fettered by COVID. In my discussion with Rick Lowkey, he posed a couple of questions that I could not give a coherent answer to, because obviously, I was on the phone, I didn't have any documents in front of me. And one of the points is in your brief here, that airport runway extension is not in any way fettered by selling property on the south side of the airport. So what was the rationale for not selling property, the recommendation which council adopted, not to sell property on the south side? And I have learned that the advice was that you would get the city, which is struggling in many aspects of its financial situation, and all its cost centers, and the losses it sustains, and the airport is a major operational loss, is that you would glean more revenue from leasing over time, from leasing property as opposed to selling it. And then in your, your presentation, which is well-written, very clear, appreciate that, but there's two contradictory statements, which just adds to the complexity. In the third bullet, you said the city could potentially see an increase in property tax revenue after we have upgraded the current old building. I have to say, I understand, by the way, your hesitation on improvements if you don't own the property, I understand that. But then the next bullet says, moving forward, we may look at becoming a nonprofit organization due to the fact that we're not a money-making enterprise, and an MPO typically qualifies for tax exemption allowances. So, you know, if we sell it, fine, we get some cash infusion, but if we become a nonprofit stuff, and you do get granted tax exemption, which is a discretionary decision of council, we would get no tax for it. So that just reinforces the report, the recommendation given to council by that report, that you're better off to lease it. But then on the other side, you know, what, what development is likely to happen at our municipal airport here? What companies would come in here to lease property? And that's where you get into, you know, what is hoped for and what might be based more in reality. And I'm of the view that, you know, I firmly believe that we've got to maintain an airport here for, the big driver, of course, is medical evacuations, but there's also a whole bunch of ancillary things that happen. So we are, we are going to have continued subsidy, but I'm hoping we can get a better governance future for the airport, not from the point of view of any criticism of management and that, but sharing in the load of supporting it, and mayor's sort of leading that initiative so that we can sustain our airport. But I can't see, even with that, that there be any people lined up to lease. I just don't see it. One of the good things that's happened, and you made mention of it in your report, is the flying school. And that certainly is great to see, and certainly the statistics for takeoff and landings and all that, and shedding a stronger light on airport activity, that's all great. And I'd hate to see any of that lost. But Rick talked about potential, more from the point of view, the tension of this airport, more from, I think it was recreational stuff, but are you, are you able to express, I hope, because I don't know if it's just Rick's opinion or the group's opinion, about what you see as the potential growth of the airport from a recreational teaching school, and possible support from the Northern Lights College, and how it helps them? Have you got any comments on that?
Oh, definitely. The flying, or the flight school that is here has generated a lot of new interest, as you all are aware, with the Abbeys, in their proposal to lease slot number sixty-two. With every new pilot, you get your driver's license, just taking it back a step to when you're sixteen. Get your driver's license, the first thing you do is shopping for a new car. Well, you get a new pilot, you don't want to fly the Flight Schools one seventy-two that has forty thousand hours on it, you're looking for your own. And of course, with every passion comes the interest and the input, and, so yes, with the flying school, they just had eight more students go through and pass their flight test. They still have the written to do, but the flight test is really, it's the hard part. So there's the potential of eight more new pilots, and, you know, possibly depending on, but a few more aircraft in the area. And it all adds into the details and the statistics that I put into my report, that show, you know, the fuel purchases, the takeoff and landings, which add to the aircraft movements, which transport Canada and the federal government, take into consideration for funding. So yes, there's still a lot of room for our growth of the general aviation. And that's where it starts, right? You start with your private license, then you move on to your commercial. Once you've got your commercial, and then that's where the medevac pilots come in, and then they move up to the Q4, and then into the jumbo jets. So it is just the first step in the natural progression of moving forward.
One last.
Yep.
And how does, can you tie the college into this scenario that you're painting?
Well, the college is actually, I have spoken to them a couple of years ago about setting up an actual AME, like, maintenance facility at the airport. I can't remember the dean's name off the top of my head, but, but they were very interested in, you know, in that potential. So there is huge potential, but from a private enterprise, the leased cost is prohibitive. Your ROI is, is zero, if not negative, so that will never, you'll never see any growth there. With a big enterprise on a long-term lease, quite possibly, and that's not my forte, so I can't really comment, I have an opinion but not answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. And so two points I would just like to emphasize, and councillor Parslow touched on a couple of them as well. The airport runway extension, or that potential runway extension that council's been considering over the last number of years, and there was the engineering, the initial engineering and design for that, to extend it by a thousand feet. All of the zoning, all of the requirements that we would need to do that are in place, and the, the impact of the hangar or any property to the south of it, as was mentioned, doesn't have any impact on that runway extension at all for us. It's purely a matter of, do we make the decision to move ahead with it or not? And we have the ability to do that, and it has some lighting that would move into the Gold Green Smart property, I think was the last I recall about that. But in terms of logistics, we can do that, and so there was no impact in council's decision at all in terms of that property and the impacts of the hangar. And I think the Flight School as well has been a very beneficial aspect, too. The more times through now Canada you have planes landing and taking off, those count in terms of the viability of the services that you're providing. And so that's been absolutely a, really a positive, to see that Flight School coming into the community and into the airport. For us, eight hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in direct subsidy to operate the airport, and a million, I think a million one, a million two to operate it, and about two hundred or three hundred grand back in revenues. It's an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar, not for the taxpayers of the city, and that's the issue. And so I think that's the piece of it, for, I think, the long term has been in place, why the councils have been hesitant to sell the property, because the values in that operation is in the dirt. It's who owns the dirt and what you do. It's who owns the dirt and what you do with it and have the ability to do with in the future. And that's the wrestle that I think past councils have had and this council as well. So it is that 850 that we juggle every day, and it's a direct cost to the taxpayers and the business community of Dawson Creek who are carrying it all. Primarily, it's been air ambulance services. So anyway, so I just wanted to say, first of all, how much we appreciate you guys coming in today to give an update to council and have this discussion. And the request that you make through this will be brought back and later in the agenda under Mayor's Business for council to discuss and move forward with. So thank you so much.
I just have one, I was just, I'm processing as we go here. In your bullet, you talk about landscaping and drainage and stuff. So is that something that you guys have already costed, or you've talked to the airport? Have you looked at that? What does that look like for you guys, given that obviously you're not, don't have full accessibility year-round? In that area, what does that look like for you guys? What input have you gotten on what it's going to take to do that?
We have informally talked to the airport about it. A common problem of an airport is you need it fairly flat for the runway, and of course, flat ground doesn't drain. With the development around the airport, that has caused a reciprocal effect of drainage. Now low of the water, south of the road, the water table has changed. In our property in particular, the north end is very low, and in the spring, it's a swamp without the bull rush, but it is wet, it is muddy, and you just simply cannot get any of the six aircraft out without, you know, going in there with a pickup and towing them through. And now you've created six to, you know, whatever inch-deep ruts that would have to be fixed. So basically, the property is inaccessible for at least two months during the spring, including my property to the east there, the big hangar. It's quite often, there's a lake, I have a picture of ducks on the water, there's so much water there in the spring because of the drainage issue, which is a whole new ball of wax, which we would be happy to enter into discussion about to get that fixed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We'll deal with it back later in the agenda under Mayor's Business.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next delegation will be a delegation that will be here at 1:00 to give a council an update on the, from urban matters, on the draft housing needs assessment report. Item three, new council business. Anyone? Councilor Wilbur, Councilor Earl?
I just want to take a moment. November 27th is Plaid Friday, so I'm encouraging everyone to shop local. I know with social distancing and all of that kind of stuff, we can't do things as usual, so we're not going to have our big gatherings and stuff, prize givings and all of that kind of stuff. However, NDIT, if you shop local and you take a picture of yourself and you can email it in, so watch the Love Dawson Creek Facebook page, you'll get entered in a draw through Love Northern BC. So I'm going to put it out there that the last two years in a row, I think, local people have shopped and spent about $250,000 to $300,000 locally this time of year. So I'm encouraging you to do that, and our small businesses really could use that support. And there really truly isn't anything that you can buy for your family for the holiday season that you can't get right here in town. So I just want to put that out there. You'll see more information coming out. But November 27th is the kickoff, so wear plaid and shop local and utilize our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Shailen. Councilor Wilbur. Councilor Earl?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to update council that I took a few minutes to attend the K-PAC AGM that took place last week. I think you all probably got a copy of their annual report in your email, which I passed along to staff. I just wanted to congratulate them on a successful year under some very, very challenging circumstances and some of the innovative tactics they've employed in order to continue providing value to the community in what has been obviously a very challenging year.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Anything further, council business? Business, sorry, minutes, minutes of a regular meeting of council for October 5th for adoption. Councilor Parslow move? Second, Councilor Kemp? Any errors or omissions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. And is there any new business arising from the minutes? Anybody? Correspondence, we have a letter from Dale Rose, CPA, Sandra Rose Bone Grindell, regarding the interim audit for City of Dawson Creek, ending December 31st, 2020. Councilor Parslow? Move, receive for information. Second, Councilor Wilbur? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. 6.2, we have a letter from Chris Fudge, the Director of Government Relations for BC Transit, regarding the Dawson Creek Transit System rider capacity. And we had this letter received last week. We maybe have a motion to receive for discussion with Councilor Jevakov, Councilor Dober? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Blair, do you want to give us an update on your meetings with Transit and what's the latest direction we're hearing from them?
Certainly. Through your worship, we have been in communication with BC Transit and our school district as well. Working with the school district, they have agreed to open the schools earlier in the morning, as well as keep them open later in the afternoon, post the adjournment of school for those students that will, in the morning, catch the earlier bus if they so choose, or catch a later bus going home. Temporary solution, albeit, but at 20 below, it's probably a very good one. The work we're doing with BC Transit right now is they are looking at changing out our 27-foot buses to 35-foot buses so that the students that are being passed up would not be passed up. On average, we're seeing three to four, six on the high side. Those students would be accommodated with the larger bus, according to BC Transit. BC Transit has made a determination, not just in the City of Dawson Creek, but across their operating area, that they will run their buses at about two-thirds capacity, based on the COVID pandemic and the separation that they require. We have let them know that, you know, they could, as we've just seen from the medical health officer, look at things regionally. I think it's far different passing up a student at 20 below standing at a bus stop than passing up somebody when it's 20 above, somewhere in the south. So they've been working at it. I was on the phone as of last Friday. We're hoping to hear something on the buses, hopefully this week. But that is where it is at, your worship.
Did they give us any timeframe in terms of when they might see the delivery of those larger capacity?
They'd originally talked a month and a half, that was a week and a half ago. We let them know that was unacceptable. We couldn't, you know, our weather's changing quickly, as we can see right now. So they are working at that. They may have found an option that would see that relatively soon, two buses brought here, but I won't know that until they communicate with me this week.
Thank you. Councilor Dober?
Would it make sense to look at, like, using an outside company in the meantime to help with the children and getting them to school?
We can look at anything, there's a cost associated with that. So if council so choose to spend the money, we could, I'm sure, come up with whatever the wish was. As I said, many years ago, the students used to get on the school bus, go from the elementary school to the junior or senior high, go from one to the other. That was discontinued, I'm going to say 12 to 15 years ago by the school district, at which time there seemed to be a transition over to the public transit system for those students requiring travel. So, but anything is possible, certainly.
Is BC Transit, like, I get the pandemics going on, it's out of everybody's control, but have they lowered, you know, what they're collecting from the city because they're not meeting their requirements on the agreement?
You know, no, they haven't. There's also funding coming from the government to help offset the costs with transit. We're supposed to know something. There is a call, I believe, on the 23rd of this month. I could be off a day or two there, at which time they will roll out, hopefully, the losses we've incurred, to see what they're going to do to offset that. But that has been raised by others. If they're running at two-thirds capacity and only allowing that many people on our buses, are we to pay two-thirds of the cost of the contract? Fair question, and we will pursue that. I mean, the challenge is, our transit system, the primary use of it is early morning, late afternoon. We have people on it throughout the day, but not in the numbers that we see first thing in the morning or after school, for example. Those are the key prime times for the usage of our transit system here in Dawson Creek.
Councilor Parslow?
You made reference that there's some future discussion around funding for transit. So this award, this grant that's being given to, I guess, every municipality, we just received it, is not in any way directed towards transit as part of the reason for giving that money? Transit costs are separate from this?
Transit are separate, yes. That is the COVID restart funding that you're talking about.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, the dilemma, you, and you know, I saw it the other morning at 7:30 in the morning and passed the transit bus, and there was virtually no one, there was one person on the bus at the time. And then it's that pressure of eight to nine, when people are, the kids are on the bus, it seems like, and that's the time that it's most in demand, and it's still, we're still facing that same dilemma of nobody riding, virtually low, low ridership the rest of the day, except for the hour at the end of the day when the kids get out of school and increase that ridership. And so we've got that two-hour timeframe in the daytime that the pressure is being put on us, primarily as a result of the reduction that BC Transit have imposed arbitrarily under the ridership of reducing it by a third. And that's the frustration to, I think, to all of us. Councilor Earl?
So just for my own, so the current buses we have have a capacity of, you said, 20?
They're 27-foot, I believe, 27 and a half.
27-foot, so the capacity is roughly?
I think they will run on the seating capacity as 30, I believe.
30, so they're down to 20?
I believe that's the number they're running.
Okay. And a 35-foot bus would allow us?
They would allow another five on, they thought, which would meet the pass-ups. They are documenting the pass-ups, which doesn't help the students standing at the bus stop, but they're, you know, keeping track.
Council, sorry, Councilor Wilbur?
Through you to staff, your worship. So when we look at that announcement of looking at things regionally, does that then grant us the opportunity to really discuss our demographics that we're having, including transit and these other issues where it is more expensive for us, but really, we do need the service at certain points in time?
The discussion we had was based on, there's two things. One, we have, as a council, mayor and council, made a decision to alter the service last year. That is at about $385,000 per year, down from 750, in that range, 700. But the costs right now associated with our busing system, the new annual operating agreement discussion is going to be part of this one on the 23rd or the 30th, the days I'm, they are going to finalize that this week. So we'll know more. We made, this mayor and council yourselves made the decision that you wanted to spend $350,000 a year on transit, was the motion that was passed. They couldn't deliver that. They came in at 385, council accepted that for this year, asking them to work on the budget, that's part of, I can see part of the funding from the province going to offset operating costs in the future, but it won't be a long-term solution. That will be probably a one-time injection.
Thank you.
Councilor Parslow?
Just thinking about what your councilor said, just crunching some quick figures here. We know that each child being transported has been subsidized to the tune of $14 a day. Multiply that by five days in the week, that's $70. To a month, that's with four weeks, $280. I know that parents of children who send their children to private schools, let's call it, pay $35 towards the bus that picks them up. If I add the two figures together, that's $315 a month. And I multiply that by the, let's say, 20 students that are being picked up on this bus, is there a business opportunity for a private business to relieve us of this? And we put all that money into support of it in the same way? I just throw that out, 20 times 315, 6,000-plus dollars a month? I, that might be a good business venture for somebody. I throw that, put that out on the table.
Right, and thank you.
Well, when we were looking at this, we explored the options of putting it out to other organizations, and we got zero uptake on it, right? It just, zero interest, but.
Crunch the figures, put the figures out.
Oh, yeah, no, it's absolutely, it's an expensive proposition, and putting out the capital and the operating costs to put it on the circuit for an hour in the morning, an hour at nighttime is the dilemma. The issue to me is, the weather's been cooperative for the most part. We haven't had, we've had some cold stuff, but we get into November, and there, these guys, Transit are a month away from delivering us more capacity, and they arbitrarily make a decision to reduce capacity and reduce the revenue that we receive, and we got 30 below. A health risk, the kids are out there on the street at 30 below, if they have no other option. Anyway, yeah, it's frustrating. Councilor Parslow?
Add to my figures, $63,000 for two hours a day? That's what, that would be it? $60,000 of revenue, transport 20 kids, boost two in front of school, 10 months a year, should maybe nine months a year, but I did it for 10 months a year. Is that a business proposition? I think it's pretty good cash flow.
And, you know, and that's the other thing, right? But do we look at, to Councilor Dober's point, do we look and see how much is diversified transportation that runs a 50-passenger, or 40-passenger bus, run for an hour service? And is that, is that something we should explore, right? Any further discussion on the letter, on the issue? I think we, obviously Blair's dealing with BC Transit on it, and we'll see what direction that they take and get either increasing capacity for us by larger buses and how soon that is, and what the revenue impacts are to, and what the province does with that. Councilor Parslow?
Well, I'd like to make a motion, because I feel passionate about this. But I'm thinking that I would like to ask, council received a report from staff about the private company providing bus service for these students. And present the, I just, even global dollars, present the, as an option to consider for the future. So I'd like to make that as a motion.
Thank you. So for the, for future negotiations with the service of transit in the community, is what your intent is on a private model?
No, I was thinking of possibly looking at engaging a private company instead of transit.
Yeah, that's, okay. So do I have a second?
Have some figures, crunch.
For a second time, do we have a second, or Councilor Wilbur? Discussion. Councilor Earl?
Was that subject, like, not that I'm opposed to, if there is a private enterprise solution to this, I am certainly not opposed, but I was under the impression staff did that work as part of our exploration of different models last year. Now, if we wanted to get some pricing, and I don't imagine that the two-week gap would be a bunch of help if transit is going to deliver the larger buses sooner than later, but if we were to explore Councilor Dober's suggestion of maybe finding a short-term interim solution to make sure that kids aren't being left out in minus 15, I'm not opposed to that necessarily, but I don't know that a report on private, we should be in the business of doing up a business case for companies. I don't know if, given our financial circumstances, that's a great use of staff time.
Thank you. Councilor Jevakov?
Well, I'm glad that Blair has got some options that he's working on to deal with this issue. The school's opening up early, I think that's a good option. I think if a kid, if a parent realizes that, you know, it's 30 below, and the kid will have to go out there and stand at the bus and maybe miss it at the 8:15 time, that they would probably prefer to send them to school earlier at 7:30. You know, a lot of the rural students are getting on a bus at 7, 7:30, and, you know, it's, it's just part of the, part of the day. So that sounds like a pretty good option to me. So that sounds like a pretty good option to me and, and the larger buses are also a, a good option. So I'm glad to see that, uh, those are in place. Uh, with the motion, I'm just wondering, are you suggesting that we terminate, uh, BC Transit and look at a replacement with another company?
Not, no, I didn't make that as part of the motion. That I, I put out some general figures. I would like those figures substantiated by staff and presented to council so we know what a private option might cost us based upon what we're, we are contributing right now. Whether there's any private business who wants to respond to it in this community, that's not us to go and ask them, but if we put that out as an option for future years, maybe next year, we can look at that as an option and decide whether we want to go there. But I don't see changing the transit thing this, this, uh, until we've, uh, got that and there's been appropriate timing for it. Now is not the appropriate time to cut, to terminate a contract.
So would that mean that, uh, in addition to the three hundred and eighty-five thousand that we're paying Transit, we would be spending additional money, uh, to hire a private firm?
That's not my intention, no. I just think we need to have some of the facts there and just, and it might illuminate counsel to a cheaper option. Um, so I'm not, I just want us to have the figures before us and you can, we can then discuss it. Right now, I've just thrown out some figures that need to be verified. If we seriously want to look at budget cuts, uh, this might be a way of cutting budget, but I don't wish to preempt that, but we could if it works for kids. It may work for the, the people who require our bus service and we may be able to work something out for them. I'm just focusing on this as an example of how we might, in the future, save money. But all I'm proposing is that we get a report on the potential revenue that is currently targeted to supporting this transit system for these twenty or so kids, two hours a day. What would that look like if it was done by a private company? Um, and it's purely theoretical, but let's, let's see the figures.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Comments? Blair?
Um, just so that I'm clear, we can bring that back, that report, it will be similar to some of the work we've done. Uh, it would be probably an RFQ or an RFP to see if people would be interested. The numbers will vary. This is the first year of the revised, uh, transit service that , uh, council adopted, so I, we're not sure. We've had a hundred, in the previous years, on average, it would be a hundred thousand rides. Not riders, but rides. So you can transfer from one, you can get a, uh, we subsidized our transit, uh, system to the tune of about seven hundred thousand dollars a year, so seven dollars. Every time somebody stepped on the bus, the city taxpayer paid seven dollars for that person to ride it. Um, we're not sure what those numbers will be like. We'll know more by year end, um, some kind of reflection. We can go out and see this. We have, as you indicated, your worship, we have very little take-up last year when we looked at this. There may be the opportunity that someone can rethink a, a better model. Um, maybe it is, you know, in the morning, uh, they would look at providing a, a healthy service in the morning and late afternoon, and maybe a midday service, for example, where ours do run uh, throughout the day, but we can pursue it and bring something back if there's a response.
I, so and I think he, I think Counselor Parslow's motion was just simply to, to put some of the data together on what the costs are today based on the ridership?
Because I, if I may speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I threw out the figures that you just mentioned, seven dollars a ride, fourteen dollars a day. But that was based upon, as you correctly stated, previous year. What is it now? That's why I wonder, figures verified. I'm not, see, all I'm saying is give those, those figures and then we can steer over it. But no RFQs, nothing, it's just, uh,
Okay, do the analysis on the data of what we have today.
It's the information, yeah.
So it may take us some time to get that then because we rely on Transit to give that ridership data and, uh, et cetera?
Well, there's that. I, I do think we're in a unique time right now with COVID and the ridership and you're being limited to twenty percent, or twenty people, I'll say two-thirds capacity. I'm not sure, we'll bring you the information that we can garner, I'm happy to do that. I'm not sure it'll be the accurate information that'll be reflective for the years to come.
And we don't, and I, I don't think we need it, there's no immediacy to this. We're dealing with Transit, uh, in terms of what we do and what the options are for Transit, uh, to do this, so.
Okay.
Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. Counselor Jevakov opposed? Sorry, were you opposed, Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah, Counsel Jevakov opposed. Thank you. Um, reports, item seven, seven point one, we have report number twenty-two oh three from the General Manager of Community Services regarding the potential reopening of the Kinn Orin Cana Event Center Arena, and this came as a result of the direction from our last meeting. Um, so perhaps we can have a motion to receive for discussion? Counselor Kemp, Counselor Parslow, all in favor? Opposed, carried? Blair or Ross?
Ross, go ahead.
Good morning, your worship, council, thank you. Um, council asked that staff bring back the implications of opening either of those facilities. And the other piece of the request was, uh, some information on what other surrounding communities are, are doing in our area. Um, you have before you two scenarios to open either the Encana Event Center or the Kinn Arena. I believe we could, uh, open either at the direction of council. Um, I would say the biggest difference in the two, um, situations is that the Encana, um, given the requirements for the ammonia plant and the, the fact that they're currently pretty much shuttered, uh, they could not get that building open before, uh, I think it was the ninth of January, so quite a significant, uh, uh, length of time to get that building open. Um, I've met and talked with our own staff. I believe we could get the Kinn open near the end of this month if, uh, directed by council. Um, the other piece was the, the information regarding surrounding communities. Uh, we just only got that information toward the end of next week. Uh, Dawson Creek and Fort St. John are the only two communities in this area that have multiple sheets of ice. Fort St. John has the North Peace Arena. We don't anticipate that that will open before the new year, if at all, in, in, for the balance of this season. Um, all of the facility, all of the other facilities, uh, Tumblr, Chatwin, uh, Taylor, our own rinks, we're all under the same, um, guidelines, COVID-19 guidelines. We have a reduction in the use of the arenas. We have limited numbers permitted in the buildings. Um, nobody is using showers. They are using mul, uh, uh, separate entrances and exits, so everybody's under the similar, uh, constraints um, and exercising the COVID-19 protocols. Um, we did reach out to local groups, um, uh, with a potential scenario of council were to choose to open the buildings. Uh, what kind of ice time would you be prepared or be willing to, to commit to? And I think, and we just got that information back end of last week. We have, uh, estimated a commitment of approximately seventy percent of what they would typically use in a given year or typical times. Um, also important to note at the moment, um, and there was some conversation during the last meeting, uh, when we, when we looked at the numbers and we ran the numbers, we are, uh, Dawson Creek Minor Hockey, as an example, is only down at present about twenty percent on a weekly basis. They would typically use about fifty-six hours. They're down to about forty-four hours a week as we speak. Um, Mile Zero Figure Skating Club are down about eighteen percent. I think they're down from about twenty-one hours a week to seventeen hours a week. Um, so that's it in a nutshell. The, the cost to open up the Encana, which we've got from Dustin, was in the neighborhood of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, be January through March. Uh, we estimate the cost of operating the Kinn as between sixty and seventy thousand dollars a month. Uh, we're currently into our current budget at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we factor in another, say seventy thousand dollars, we're at three hundred thousand dollars. Um, for this year, our, our average annual budget is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then it would cost the city, uh, about two hundred and ten thousand dollars to operate January, February, or March, so. That's in a nutshell. Happy to answer any other questions?
Thank you, Ross. Comments, questions, council? Counselor Parslow?
Thanks, Ross. I appreciated reading your report. It was short, to the point, so that's great. Um, maybe it's my, this is maybe my fault. Uh, when I said some statistics about how, what other communities were doing, um, I mentioned Smithers and Terrace and stuff and, uh, so I, uh, I'm quite aware of what you said within our peace region, so I'm just curious about what other northern communities that have, uh, you know, inclement, uh, winters, but, um, yeah, I get a little confused about some of the stats, right? I mean, you've just thrown out some figures here, forty-four hours of use, right, minor hockey? Um, and what was it for speed skating?
Uh, yes, eighteen, seventeen hours.
Seventeen, so I add that sixty-one hours, seven days a week. You know, we get about, uh, what, sevens into sixty-one, when I went to school was eight and a bit, eight and a half hours use a day, averaged out. When we had our, a study done, um, on, like, Mr. Johnson from Calgary, um, he said that we had the need for one point two arenas. So, uh, we know that for the, uh, that there are no tournaments, no games. Uh, junior Canucks are playing, correct?
I believe so.
There's no organized, or no, no organized, uh, tournaments or, or, or games happening.
Just quickly through your worship, yes, there is gameplay at this point in time, no tournaments to date, and we're still governed, there's no spectators in the buildings.
There is, are games?
There are games, yes.
So like Tumblr Ridge is coming here, let's say?
Uh, within, again, sorry, through your worship, uh, through cohort, through their own cohorts, if they're, if they're staying within that dedicated group, and I think that is quite limited at this point in time.
Right, well, my point I, I was wondering about, you know, is that we, uh, the study we had done, one point two, and we, there's less use of the ice for actual hockey games. Uh, and then we have these figures of sixty-one hours a week. Uh, I'm struggling to understand why they can't be accommodated in one arena. Because it's seven hours a day, eight hours a day.
Thank you, and through, through your worship, that is the, that, those are the hours for Dawson Creek Minor Hockey and Mile Zero Figure Skating Club, which were the two groups. We still have speed skating and the rec hockey, the adult hockey, so those groups are also taking advantage of the building.
Thank you so much.
And just for clarification, it was my recollection on that report from Brian Johnson, we had one point eight arenas. The needs for one point eight arena. So I wouldn't mind if we can, for information, I would, uh, that's my recollection, it was one point eight, anyway. Counselor Dover?
Well, just a few things, um, I guess, one is I understand what Charlie was saying about, you know, what's going on in the world and games. I met with the president of minor hockey and he did say that as much as there's not tournaments now, they are gathering with, um, plan to gather with like Tumblr Ridge, Chatwin and have three or four game weekends in towns. So there'll be weekends where instead of having a tournament, that Prince George might come to Dawson and play four or five games through that weekend with one or two teams. Um, the other part is, is, um, you know, I, I think with what's going on in the world and the pandemic that we should be looking at what the best interest is of our kids and, um, giving them activities to do and, um, yeah, and, and being out there, my, both my kids are in, in minor hockey, one was and one's, uh, starting now, but I don't know, it's something they look forward to and I, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to take away from that and what our community, um, does and, you know, if we require one point two arenas, I think we have to, to look at that and, and consider um, that we're giving that to the children and not taking away from them in, in these times especially. Um, you know, and then there's the other side of it, I, you know, Fraser Health in Vancouver just, um, canceled all, um, contact sports, um, where there's no COVID, um, distancing can take place for two weeks um, to see, and then, you know, Grand Prairie's had, you know, a spike and everything and they're over a hundred cases and uh, full masks. So there's just so many uncertainties right now and, you know, to commit to putting the ice in, you know, it's tough and then they close it down in two weeks, I, you just don't know, right? But I, I feel that it is something we should look at doing for, for the kids in the community, but there's just so many restrictions that, you know, it's so uncertain.
Thank you. Counselor Earl, Counselor Wilber?
Thank you, worship, and I do share Counselor Dover's concern that, uh, should we go to put staff to the trouble and, and spend the money of opening up another ice rink only to have Northern Health or the provincial health officer intervene and, uh, shut everything down again, that would be disappointing. Having said that, um, when we initially, or when I initially supported, uh, Mothbunk and Arena for the year due to COVID, it wasn't with the intent of depriving anybody of the service so much as we didn't think there would be a demand for it. Turns out, obviously, in, in a pandemic, the cost savings were an added benefit. I'm not gonna dispute that. Uh, we weren't sure how our finances were gonna shake out at the time. We've got a better picture of that. Not great, but not disastrous either. Uh, and we do have this two point six, two point seven million dollar, uh, stipend from the provincial government, which is intended for purposes exactly like this. Um, so, so I'd be in favor of reopening the Kinn Arena, I think. As Counselor Dover said, the longer this pandemic wears on, the more difficult it's gonna be for people mentally, psychologically to maintain some semblance of normalcy. And, um, children especially, uh, to have them uh, not be able to live life as they would otherwise do it and, and to have that routine constantly disrupted, I think is not in anybody's interest, so given that, um, hopefully this is just a temporary, you know, still, I mean, it's wearing on longer than anyone would like, but it is still, to my mind, a temporary thing that will at some point pass. And given that we do have funding, uh, explicitly for this purpose, I'd be fine with pursuing the Kinn Arena.
Thank you. Counselor Wilber, then Counselor Dover?
Thank you. Um, for as long as I've sat here in, in a chair at council, the ice users have come every year and said there's not enough ice and they don't have enough hours and each group needs more. So that's an ongoing conversation we've always had. What comes to mind for me is the announcement that Dr. Henry just made here a couple of days ago, saying to avoid indoor activities, to get outside more, not necessarily be inside. And when they look at what re, what regionalization looks like for users, for communities, I guess we'll know more about that. I also don't believe that the money coming from the province is specifically for, um, hockey or ice skating or this season's sports. I think it's to be used for the community as a whole. Many sports, um, and culture and organizations, whether it be the arts, anybody in our community has had to change the way they do business. They've had to accept that things are different, that we have to gather in smaller amounts. I'm also concerned, as much as I think our kids need to get the, out and recreate, um, how small's the bubble when other communities are coming in and we don't know what they're doing within their community? Now they're coming in, playing games, so what is that isolation? Is there fourteen days, um, grace period? All of these things that we have to look at for the community as a whole. Um, I look to what's happening currently, um, at Rotary and, you know, that's sad for our community when per capita, you know, we have high numbers. Where are those people, the staff and stuff, what have they done outside of their job? And these are all things we have to take into consideration. I feel for the ice users, I really do. But for me, this is the new normal for this season until we hear differently, and I am opposed to opening up any more ice time. I'm opposed to having staff go in and do all this for, you know, two or three months at the cost. I think we just have to accept, um, some changes as a community as a whole. And so I know many other organizations that got no season at all. They were completely shut down. They may not even get an indoor season for winter. So these are things, it's not about one or two or three or four user groups, it's about the community as a whole. And as much as I like a good hockey game and I think it's a great sport and, and figure skating. And as much as I like a good hockey game, and I think it's a great sport, and, and figure skating, and the speed skating, all of these things that we have that are winter recreation for our community, I think we have to stay the course, and we have to keep those bubbles as small as possible. So for me, I am opposed to putting in that ice. And again, I reiterate, I don't think the funding coming from the province is specified for this. I think it's specified for the community as a whole. And as a group, we have to look at where that money will best serve our community.
Thank you. Counselor Dober, and then Blair.
I'm just a little confused on, so one, you know, originally, I thought the Kinn Arena was closed due to budget cuts, but then I realized it was closed just due to COVID. So if we've budgeted an amount to have both arenas open for the year, and then we've closed one, and there's an extra cost, I guess, to run things to COVID protocol, what is the true number that it's costing above the budget? Because, you know, we don't need money from anywhere else if we've already budgeted to have both arenas open, correct? So where, you know, what's the, what's the cost on top of the budget to, to meet COVID protocol that it's actually going to be costing the taxpayers?
Ross?
Thank you, your worship, through your worship. The actual cost is in cleaning. Right now, staff hours that would have been allocated to the Kinn, or we're using those staff for the deep clean, we have to go in between each group, do a scrub, spray the areas, those sorts of things. We anticipate if we open the Kinn, we're going to need those hours back in the Kinn, obviously. And we anticipate to make, right now, what are Phase Three COVID guidelines and what could be back to Phase Two. We anticipate, at present, about a halftime position or about an additional $15,000. And if we are directed to go back to Phase Two, we anticipate that number could be around $30,000.
Like monthly?
No, that would be for the season.
Oh.
To finish this season, sorry, four months.
Yeah. Because, I mean, the way they got the arena set up now, where you're only sitting in one section, they don't have to clean the whole arena, it's just one area. So there's not, like, the times I've been there, there's no more staff there, and they seem to have a lot of time to, to, to complete the tasks.
There is, and I can, I don't have it with me, I can present our cleaning schedule, but they definitely have to go in. And, and like you say, not so much the, the bleachers themselves, but the dressing rooms, the walkways, the entrance ways, all have to be disinfected in between those events.
Yeah. So I guess in, overall, we're asking for fifteen, maybe $30,000 above budget to open a second arena for the season.
Correct.
Blair, and then Counselor Jevakov.
Just some clarity on the, Counselor Earl raised the 2.793 million as well. When that's being spoke about, by no means, and I will be clear, this is not a windfall for the city. Just for, to do a quick refresher, there was a million dollars given in relief of taxes last year. There was 400-plus thousand dollars that we will forego in gaming revenue last year, as well as this year coming, most likely. We also reduced the water, sewer, and garbage issues. So that, the intent of that is to help offset any of your costs you've incurred to date to help your community. So it doesn't mean this can't be done, this discussion. I just want to be clear that we anticipate, and I'll give you as your C A O, I don't think we have felt the full impact of COVID financially. Although we're in the middle of a pandemic right now, I think the financial impact to this city is going to be in the years to come as well. So that's what that money is to, part of it is to help offset.
Thank you. Counselor Jevakov?
Yeah, I, I don't understand, like, we have an arena open, so we have minor hockey. The kids are skating, doing their thing. What is the impact of not having the Kinn Arena open? And I, I recollect the 1.2 arenas requirement, and the comments that were made regarding the reduced tournaments and that type of thing. So an individual, like, say, one of Darcy's children, they're obviously in minor hockey now, so they're getting some minor hockey. So if we open the Kinn Arena, does that mean they'll get another hour a day or a, a week? Or what is the impact? Like, what are we trying to accomplish here? Like Jeremy was saying, that, you know, the kids are not getting an opportunity, they're losing their ability to, you know, go skating and that type of thing. So that's what I don't understand. Like, there obviously is a minor hockey program. So the kids are getting some minor hockey. So it's not like soccer, where they, they couldn't play soccer this summer. So what is the impact? That's what I, I don't understand. Like, are we talking about trying to, to get them to 100%? Because I think everybody's going to take an impact over COVID. I know I've taken an impact. You know, there's stores I can't go in, there's people that I can't go visit, there's grandchildren that I have to talk to them from across the lawn. So I'm impacted. So, you know, is minor hockey impacted the point where there's no hockey? Or are we talking about, you know, simply a, a small percentage of, like, trying to get them to 100%? Like, if I could get, you know, some clarification on that. But at this point, you know, I think we're, you know, we've already set the, determined what we're going to do, and I'm not prepared to change it unless, you know, there's a real serious impact. But like I say, everybody's taking a hit over COVID. So, you know, I don't think minor hockey should be exempted from that. I think, you know, we all have to bear, bear some of the brunt.
I think one thing we should emphasize here is minor hockey gets the attention here. But there are a number of user groups at the arena, and there's figure skaters, there's speed skaters, there's adult recreation, there's junior hockey, there's senior hockey, there's minor hockey, there's a whole bunch of groups. And we heard from the figure skaters exactly the same issue, that they were feeling the reduction in ice time. Minor hockey, when we talk about the availability of ice and the reduction, the kids are leaving school, getting pulled out of school early, because we had to open up the ice at three o'clock in order to get that ice time available. So now we've got parents being, pulling, and my understanding is they're leaving school early in order to get to that ice time earlier than they normally would have been. So, Ross, you want to comment on that?
Thank you, through your worship, and I think to Counselor Jevakov's question, while the, say Dawson Creek Minor Hockey hours have been reduced, we are estimating some 20%. Their biggest challenge is, as I understand it, they've had an increase in their enrollment, and the, the challenges with COVID have, have, have led these groups, they can only put so many kids on the ice. So the actual, say, per family, per person, time on the ice has been reduced over the years. So the kids aren't getting as much ice time as they typically would.
Yep, go ahead and finish.
I thought their enrollment was reduced, that they were talking about going from 290 down to 250.
Thank you, through your worship. No, they, my understanding from minor hockey is their numbers were actually up this year. Their registration was higher than.
So could we get some clarification from that? Aaron Bull, when he was here, I believe he stated that they went from 290 down to 250.
I think originally, they were up. And then, once the COVID protocols came in, they went down, but.
Counselor Parsl?
No, I always remember something you, you said about COVID, which I really applauded and appreciated. Our hope is to keep it out of this town. Remember you saying that? Yeah. Now we've got it in spades. And then I, it really disturbs me when I hear that hockey is planning on bringing teams from Prince George and Tumbler Ridge to this town. That upsets me to no end. We've got enough contamination of our health in this community. And I'm wondering if, if that meets the guidelines, current guidelines. I don't know what may happen with, we have a significant challenge in the northeast region. So is there any, want to know, is that what Darcy said, is that possible? Is that violate COVID, or is it just violate common sense?
Well, I think minor hockey and all organized, organizations have to adhere to the protocols set by the public health officer and the chief medical health officer, so.
So are, would such a thing be in accordance with those?
Well, you're limited, the limit is, how many people are you allowed in the facility? At 50. And, and then you have cohorts that you're allowed to be able to interact with.
Yeah, that's the cohort part. So I don't know if it's possible.
Just a couple of things here. Yeah, things may be in budget, but we don't necessarily have to spend the money. We have a responsibility for the stewardship of the taxpayers' dollars. And if we think that we spend wisely, that's, and that's why I initially started asking questions. You know, I hear, and once started 1.2, I started looking at the hours, but then I was corrected by the fact that there are other users, which I was omitted, because we haven't heard from, from them. So that's why I was wondering if we could accommodate, I sure hope young children aren't being pushed to times later in the evening for adults. I hope the adults are.
That is not happening.
It's not happening. I see. I see.
Counselor, sorry. Counselor Earl?
Um, just, yeah, I wanted to reiterate Counselor Parsl's point. My intention in, in supporting opening the Kinn Arena was that kids would, you know, retain some semblance of normalcy for the sake of, you know, community. From what I understand, in having spoken with some people involved in hockey, is their cohort, they're, they're able to play exhibition games now with Fort St. John, and that is the extent of it, based on we're in Phase Three, right? So I, I don't know, this is the first I'm hearing that there are plans to bring in teams from Tumbler Ridge and Chatwin and stuff like that. But I would have serious reservations, especially given the circumstances currently unfolding at Rotary Manor, about introducing that element. And as Counselor Parsl said, I'm not sure if it's a matter of regulation or just common sense. Let's not tempt fate while we're on the cusp of something that could potentially be really, really awful here. But, but that's not a matter of, whether the Kinn Arena opens or not, that's a conversation maybe that we need to have with minor hockey about how far we want to push this.
Your worship, if I can, and Ross, correct me if I'm wrong, but minor hockey has worked very closely with the city as have other groups, based on the protocols that we have to follow, that Via Sport is involved in, in working with the provincial health office, and so on. So I don't think by any means would they attempt to ever do something that was outside of that. Just my discussions with them to this point, I know Ross as well. We've never had an indication that they would push the envelope that would be outside of what the allowable use is. Just I want to be clear, it's, I think everybody wants to get back to the, the normal we once knew, and that is having both our arenas open and games going on at the same time. We're not there unfortunately yet, but they have been very good to work with. I want to point that out.
Counselor Dober?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the same thing. I don't know, for example, if Prince George is coming here. It's just, obviously, minor hockey's going to take all the protocol that's been laid out by the minister and, like we all have. So I, you know, I'm not suggesting that they're, you know, going to abuse that at all. I just wanted to clear that.
Thank you. So I, I asked for this last meeting to come forward, and I absolutely am completely in support of reopening that second ice facility. I think it's a piece of our community that, the residents, over a thousand users of our ice facilities look to every year in terms of all of the different recreation, children's, adult recreation users. And to me, the, the winter months are the winter months when we provide ice. And I think, from my perspective, we should be moving forward to get the Kinn Arena reopened. I don't think it makes sense at this point for the Encana Event Center, but I certainly thought we should be considering that with the larger dressing rooms and more space to operate within. But I honestly believe that the Kinn Arena should be opened for recreation use for our community. And the protocols that are in place today for COVID are being respected by all the user groups, and our staff ensure that that happens. And so who's been the most difficult on is, I guarantee, is the parents who can't go into the rink to watch the kids play hockey. But the kids are still anxious to look forward to participate. And so I'm going to propose the motion that we direct our staff to put the ice back in the Kinn Arena and for the remainder of the 2020-2021 season. And I'm making that by way of a motion. Counselor Earl, discussion. Counselor Jevakov, and Counselor Parsl?
I, I think it's premature. I think we're trying to rush this whole pandemic thing. I think we need to ride it out until its conclusion. I don't think it's going to be that long. I think by spring, it'll be a whole different picture. And, you know, like I say, everybody's taking a hit, they're, they're doing their part. And I don't think the, you know, any groups, any particular groups should be exempt.
Thank you. Counselor Parsl?
Yeah, this is a moving playing field with the COVID stuff. So I was wondering, when would we bring the matter back to council? Should there be changes in the situation, either vis a vis health? Or people are not using it as they said they were going to be using? By that, I mean, they say we need another 40 hours, I'm just making these figures up, but they're only using 20 hours. Would we, would we review the situation if there was a shortfall from anticipated use?
Through your worship, we certainly could. If that was council's wish, we can do that. The motion, as I understand it today, is not imposing a requirement that you have to guarantee that you will use X hours if this is opened. I, I didn't hear that in the motion. That may be an option that you want to look at. But if, for instance, the, the decision of council was to move forward and open the facility, you know, we can keep you up to date on the usage. Certainly, we will have the hours that will be booked. But it would be a moving target. I'm not sure, Ross, and correct me if I'm wrong, would there be the ability for minor hockey then to step forward if the decision is made to open this facility to say, we are now going to book 70% of the ice time we did last year based on the allowable hours left? There is enough moving targets. I don't think you'll see, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ross, when you go into the memorial for any of the parents, I was just there on the weekend, you'll go into one side, the kids will be over there. As they're leaving, parents, you will go into the other side. We don't have that ability right now with the Kinn Arena. I'm just not sure the in and out, there may very well be a usage in that facility. And then the children and parents leave, and there's a closed time in between that. So just a number of moving factors. We can do it without question. But that question, when would we bring it back for reconsideration, really is a council directive that we would work on.
Counselor Parsl?
So as I'm understanding you, the number of available hours at Kinn would be reduced from normal because of the cleaning requirements between. So you'd have a gap of half an hour or what have you, just like the swimming pool? You know, where there's a, there may not time, is that how it's doing?
I'm going to let Ross answer. I'm just going with my experience at the memorial, knowing that we're very fortunate to use both sides, and they've done a wonderful job, minor hockey and the city staff and all of that. We don't have that ability at the Kinn, Ross. Do we have a protocol that we would follow there?
Thank you, through your worship, yes. Staff have been working on some protocols. It will be a little bit more difficult in the Kinn, but certainly we will put those protocols in place. In terms of the cleaning, if minor hockey is in there, for example, on a Saturday morning, say they've got four blocks, the one group would use this side of the building, the other group would change and enter from the other side of the building. We wouldn't have to do a deep clean or through the building until the event changed, until Mile Zero Figure Skating Club or Speed Skating or another event came in there. So we've got to manage that. And, and to your point, Blair, just a little earlier, we have reached out and toward the end of last week, have some, some, some commitment from the user groups. We asked them, given, you know, that if council should decide to open the building. So we've got some preliminary numbers available to us right now. We can certainly track it.
One last?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Yeah, I've been around a long time, okay? People make commitments, but what do they actually do? And that's what I'm talking about, is the gap. If they do live up to the commitment, that's great for the point of view. But maybe through circumstances beyond their control, right, or other factors, they don't. And that's what I wondered, when, you know, is it going to be monitored? And that's what I wondered, when, you know, is it going to be monitored, are we doing it? Because, you know, I really, I'm sure we all do, take it very seriously, this use of dollars, right, tax dollars. We already, what do we get on a good year, 35% of our expenses? Thirty? Thirty-four percent covered. This would be much less, obviously, because of other circumstances. They're just my concerns.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur, and Counselor Dober?
I'm just knowing in the report about a commitment of 1,270 hours of ice time for us to reach that 34% recovery. So have we actually seen that, or are they just saying, yes, you put the ice in, we'll use it? But have they committed to what we need to fully recover, through your worship, through you to staff, to fully recover what it's going to cost at that 34%?
Thank you, through your worship. We have received a commitment, that number is a commitment over the full six months. I would say, based on the numbers last week, we are 70% of the commitment required for the four months. Just a note for council, there has been a trend over the last few years of those hours going down. So as an example, and this is not just minor hockey, this is rec hockey, adult hockey. Last, the 2019-20 season, in the Memorial Arena, we had a reduction of 55 hours less than what was originally committed to at the beginning of the year, and in the Kinn Arena, we had a reduction of 38 hours over what was originally committed to. So there has been a trend of those hours reducing.
Thank you. Counselor Dober?
Just one thing, like with the Parks and Rec recently announcing that parents are no longer to go in the arenas, has that helped, like, the operation and the cleaning? Like, because the two doors don't necessarily matter as much now that the parents aren't allowed in for the older groups?
Thank you, through your worship, and I believe, and I may stand corrected, I believe that the parents were only allowed for the younger kids. We're still limited by that 50 number total, so I'm not sure, but certainly, the fewer people in the building, the simpler it is to.
Yeah, okay. Just, I think, can I be, I believe that's a Via Sport directive, not a City of Dawson Creek. I want to be very clear, so parents aren't crawling all over thinking we've done something here. For you nine, I believe it's nine years of age and under, the parents will still be allowed to go in. Once you crest that threshold, I believe, starting this week, the parents will no longer be allowed in. That's not a City of Dawson Creek directive, but a Via Sport directive across the province.
Thank you. Further discussion? You ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. So opposed, Counselor Parslow, Counselor Jevakov, Counselor Wilbur? Thank you, everybody, great discussion. Do we want to take a five-minute recess?
Seven.
Seven? Our next item on the agenda, 7.2, we have report number 20197 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding a revised Consumer Price Index policy. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move that report number 20-197 and the CFO of the Consumer Price Index policy be received. Further, that the policy attached to this report be approved subject to a successful 30-day review period, thereby authorizing the use of a fixed 2% annual rate to increase applicable fees effective January 1 of the following year, with the exception of community services fees and charges, which will be made effective May the 1st, and adjusting applicable fees, agreements, and contracts every four years following the NCC pass and with the BCCPI.
Thank you. Do you have a second, or? Counselor Jevakov, discussion? Flavi, do you want to offer any comments or a reason for this?
Yes, through your worship, it's mainly really to facilitate the whole budget process, because now we are starting early annually, and also, it's more easy transparency, because now we can put the three, four years of rates and be available for the public to know what the rates are.
Good, thank you for that. Counselor Wilbur?
I actually, I just wanted to make you know that I really appreciated the different font on the approval and that kind of stuff, it stands out. I actually like that, because I read it, and I'm like, okay, there's the part that I need to know if I'm asked questions, so, thank you.
Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, one of the, another reason why I like this is, in the past, we have come across instances where things have not been adjusted, and on an annual basis, so this is a good housekeeping policy.
For sure.
Thank you. Counselor Earl?
Yeah, just to reiterate Counselor Parslow's point, for, I understand, we had high viewership with the Kinn Arena subject, so for anyone still watching, it was just something we identified in our first year as a council, that there would be years of, sometimes five, six, seven years, where the prices of goods would not go up in the city, and then we, as a council, would have to institute a price increase, keep up with the cost, and it would be a fairly dramatic jump in price. This is done with an eye towards making that gradual, and it helps us forecast revenue as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you. The report, 7.3, Report 20210 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our preview assessment role. Perhaps maybe receive for discussion first, and then we can get a little bit of an overview. Counselor Wilbur, second, Counselor Earl, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Flavi and Blair, do you want to give a bit of a overview of it?
So through your worship, last Monday, we received the preview report, which represents 75% of the finalized B.C. assessment for 2021. Based on, normally, at this point, we don't have all the roles, information, it's pretty summarized per class. If you see the variance, actually, between assessed value in the preview with the previous year, it's right now only 8,700 in total, but there are major differences between classes, which we show in here, and also, they present to us a short version of what is due market change and non-market change. So the significant amount of reduction in market change has to do with what's happening currently economically, but we do have a significant impact on non-market change with change of inventory, increase of new properties, or some improvements that happened in the last years, or change of status, like the two main cases we see. So in this report, I kind of present a summary of the information we know so far for the reasons of change, and I want to bring attention that we will be presenting suggested increased rate on November 23rd in the next draft one meeting, so we'll be using those numbers to work towards what we'll be proposing as increase for property taxes. But again, as I said, it's just 75%, a lot of things can happen. I point out that here, for major industry, the two organizations that are currently appealing the status of their class, which can be significantly affecting, reducing the volume of taxes that we collect on major industry. But how this will be reflected in the presentation of draft one report.
Thank you, Flavi. It is, honestly, it was really amazing to me to see the report of how, how at the end of the year, our preview assessment role has maintained a very, very flat outcome, which is really very positive, in that we didn't see a significant decrease into both our, those two areas, residential and commercial, which we rely on so heavily, and so that's, that gives us some stability in what we do moving forward with our rate setting, and how we will be hopefully not having such a swing in market conditions on residential and commercial, so I think it's very good.
Further discussion, further comments? Counselor Parslow?
The, where did these non-market figures come from? I mean, you've got due to non-market change in Class 1, reduction of 1,276,400,000. So where, where did you get that from?
Yeah, these figures actually came from B.C. assessment, like, they said, this is, it's a pretty summarized number, subject to change. What they argued here is sometimes change of status, or like classification for residential to farm, or sometimes a portion of the residential that moves to commercial, and also, there was a significant portion through the year of appealing, people that appealed about their assessed value for 2020 that they saw was pretty high, and they won the appealing. So that ended being, affecting the adjustment there.
And that was the real issue where we had saw last year, I think it was last year or the year before, the City of Fort St. John went through all of that appeals from their preview to their assessed value, and all of a sudden, their appeals on their commercial properties lost, impacted them by about $600,000 in their revenue, and so that's how significantly that can happen, and when you have some consistency, you're starting from a really, a really solid foundation, then I think.
Counselor Parslow?
Class 4, major industry, the, that reduction, is that due to the movement of equipment at air liquid?
Not yet.
Not yet?
This one is just pure economic effect of what's happening right now in the market, yes.
So what's the approximate value of, in assessment for the air liquid?
Air liquid right now, we don't have the breakdown for 2021, based on 2020 is 8 million, so what happened is that if you change class, it can drop to, up to 1.6 million, so there will be a loss on the variance of the assessed value moving to Class 6, to what's current on Class 4.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? And so, thank you, Flavi, for that, and perhaps if we can have a motion, we receive for information. Counselor Kemp, Counselor Earl, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. 7.4, we have report number 20215 from the Corporate Officer regarding our Community Awards Counselor Jevakov?
I'll move that report number 20-215 from the Corporate Officer, re-Community Awards Policy be received. Further, that the awards presentation section of the policy be waived for 2020 due to the restrictions on large gatherings during the COVID-19 pandemic. Further, that the nominees be invited to attend a Facebook Live event held from the mayor's Facebook page, where the winners will be announced, and further, that only the winners be invited to attend the following council meeting to receive their awards.
Thank you. Do you have a second, or? Counselor Dober, discussion?
Simply just the restrictions on capacity of our room to bring all the nominees in and announce the winners here is just not possible in today's world, so we'll have a change to the policy for this year.
Brenda?
Through your worship, I just wanted to mention that the nomination period is still open until the end of the day, and we are still looking for Entrepreneur of the Year.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. 7.5, we have report number 20204 from the City Planner regarding a development variance permit for 10755 Poplar Crescent. Counselor Parslow?
I move the report number 20-204 from the City Planner, redevelopment variance permit 20-10, Michelle and Ron Anderson, 10755 Poplar Crescent be received. Further, development variance permit 20-10, Michelle and Ron Anderson, 10755 Poplar Crescent be approved, to vary the zoning bylaw number 4450-2020, Section 72.1C, by reducing the rear parcel line setback for the principal building in the RS-1 zone from 7.5 meters to 2.36 meters, and Section 5.51F by varying the rear parcel line setback for the existing deck from 3.75 meters, 50% of setback depth, to 0 meters, 100% of setback depth.
Thank you. Do you have a second, or? Counselor Earl, discussion? Counselor Jevakov?
I'm not in favor of the setback on the rear to come out right to the property line there. I think that what that does is still give the effect that that property extends into the park, and it's, you know, it is one of the only accesses from the Chamberlain, or the Willowbrook area to that park, and to me, it, when you have the deck right there at the property line, people are going to assume that the property extends past the deck, and they may be, you know, not aware that they can access the park that way.
Thank you. Mark?
Just in response to Counselor Jevakov, we have, are in the process of putting up signage for access to the Chamberlain Park off of 108th on the corner where this is. There will be one there as well, so the public is aware they can go in there. This is the area that, behind, we spoke about the trees earlier. With the removal of things in Chamberlain Park, those trees are remaining, so it does give you the impression that this could be somebody's yard, although we've put the sign or will have to sign up shortly.
Good.
If it becomes an issue, I think we may have to deal with those trees circling the yard and remove those as well.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jevakov?
Can I make an amendment, then, to this, that this is approved conditional on the city removing those trees?
Sure, yeah, I think so. The main motion is dealing with the variance, it's not dealing with the, any other aspect to it, so I'm certain that's an acceptable amendment to the motion? Or is it completely separate, Brenda? Should it be a separate amendment?
Through your worship, I believe that would be a sep-
Separate motion?
Unless you're saying that this motion depends on those trees being removed.
I would like to connect it to the variance, because it's, the reason that we're removing them is the variance.
Okay.
Otherwise, you know, if we did it after the fact, people are going to say, oh, well, they cut some trees down, and the landowner could say, well, you know, the city came and cut those trees down, it was unnecessary. I think it's, this variance should be conditional on those trees being removed. They were delineating the sort of imaginary land that they had in the park.
So, no, I get it. I think it's an amendment to the motion, and I understand it. Otherwise, if you just said, if you didn't have that, and so the motion passed, or didn't pass, and then you removed the trees, why did you remove the trees if you're removing the, not accepting the variance, right?
Yeah.
Do you have a second, or for the amendment? So the amendment is that, that council will also, accepting the variance, and moving forward with the variance, will remove the trees at the, behind the property.
Yeah.
Do you have a second, or for the amendment?
I will second it from the point of view of having a full and frank discussion.
Which we always do. Moved seconded by Counselor Parslow.
Can I, so, you know, this is, would be, perhaps, if I was a property owner, and I've got the beauty of these trees, and I'm now removing them, because the deck has gone to the property line, and we want to make sure that people know that the property line isn't at the deck, it's at, beyond the trees, rather, it's at the deck. You, staff has said that they would put up a sign. I indicate in, indicating what?
Through your worship, there are a number of access points to that park, behind the homes along the creek. So the one sign, there's probably five or six in total that will go throughout the area where there's different walkways to access it. The one I'm talking about is on the end, it would be on 108th Avenue, going out of town, right-hand side, this home is the last one on the corner going into Willowbrook. It would be behind their house, there is a pathway, if anybody has walked, that you can see access past, it would be behind these trees where that sign would go, but that sign, it's really just a courtesy sign, so the public know they, where they can get access to the parkland behind the houses.
And what sort of trees are these?
These would be, I believe, pines, if, and they were outlined on the Chamberlain report that was put forward last meeting or the meeting before, but I am not a tree expert, I will say that, your worship.
A pine has long, thin needles.
There's no leaves. They're the kind without leaves.
I didn't know if it was a whispering pine.
Oh, which type of pine? Pondrosa pine, you name it.
There you go.
White pine. Anyway, so these were planted, then, by these people?
No, I would-
Previous owners?
I would think it would be, these probably would look in the range, maybe 20 years old. I would think it would be, these probably would look in the range maybe 20 years. I'm again taking an educated guess, but somewhat. Yeah, I don't believe they would be planted by the owners of the home today.
No, but maybe the previous owner.
Okay. Counselor Wilbur?
Welcome back. I hate variances. I'm just gonna say that. I really do. I don't understand why we have what we have in place if we have to keep having variances. It's a whole conundrum. My other concern is when I look at flood mitigation work and stuff we've done, what is removing these trees going to do? Are we going to now have to worry about erosion? Are we, to me, it's a much bigger picture. I really feel for these people, but honestly, I'm voting against this. The deck's where it is. It shouldn't be there. Unfortunately, if they're the original owners or not, somewhere along the line, somebody should have got a permit. Somebody should have looked at this. It never should have been built the way it was built. Maybe the onus is on us. That's fine. I'll wear it. But I am voting against this. And as much as I would like to say yes, removing some trees would open up a walkway, now I'm concerned about erosion. So.
Just, I do want to be clear. The trees do not block the walkway. This is not a blocking of a walkway. This is a delineation. If you walk there, you would think it was their yard. I mean, it's just, that's how I would envision it. I'm walking behind the trees. It looks as though it's a nice home, a nice landscaped yard, when in fact that yard is actually part of the park. That's, so I want to be clear. There's no blockage by these trees to the actual park. But certainly, you would have to, I think, walk it to see. Hopefully, I'm trying to do my best explaining it, but it might be better to see it.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur, then Counselor Dober?
I'll take back the blockage of the path then. I'm still worried about erosion. I'm also concerned, you know, this all started way back when with a fire pit that was built in the park. And then all of a sudden, we've gone through all the expanse, all the investigation to find out, there's all this encroachment, trespassing, whatever we want to call it, along the park. And to be honest, here we are, what, one in a year, two years down the road, even more, three years. I apologize to the landowners. I really do. But I am voting against this variance. I'm really tired of people coming and asking for a variance. We have to clean it up. There are encroachments and trespasses all over our community. People are using property that does not belong to them. And that's where I sit. And I am against taking down the trees because I'm very concerned through all of what I've learned through flood mitigation, we're causing erosion by removing vegetation that is within our parks and along the creek. So that's where I stand. I apologize if you don't agree with me, but really I don't. That is just where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dober?
There was just two things. What's the reasoning for removing the trees? Like, is it just to make the entrance way? But I would just get a bit confused on, sorry.
I think I would let the mover of the motion.
Oh.
So the trees were planted to delineate this yard that they had trespassed into the park. So it's delineating their, you know, what was perceived as the, the yard for, and it probably wasn't this landowner. It was a previous landowner. I would just like to see, and they don't have to all be taken out. I don't think, I think they, I don't think they would cause erosion. I mean, it's just a tree and, you know, there's still lots of vegetation there. But if there's enough trees out there just to confirm that, no, that isn't part of the yard anymore. This variance approves the deck to come right onto the edge of the property. But that's it. The rest of it is still park. It's just to delineate it that, you know, just to open it up.
Blair has pictures.
Your worship, I have pictures of it would be, I think I could pass them out. People may get a better understanding.
Visual aid.
Hey, apparently I can't get you just one, Dars.
Thanks.
Right, counselor.
Thank you.
So these trees here, you're talking about removing?
Just some over here.
Sir.
So if I could, your worship, what we're talking about, if you look at the left-hand side of the page, you can see that little arc of trees delineating the yard that's there. That yard is actually park and the park begins right at the deck going back.
Oh, so these little trees?
Yes.
Okay. Because that makes it look like it's their yard. So you wouldn't go in that.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I'd just, one other part of that question. I just, like, this is all new to me. So I apologize a bit for asking some of these questions. Obviously, these, this family had the opportunity to buy part of the land like everybody else did.
Yes, they did.
So they chose not to. So now they're asking for a variance. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what about anybody else that's been in this whole process that wasn't going to get a variance? So they purchased the land. Like, are we opening a possible, you know, some other possible cases where we would have got the variance instead of buying the land? Like, any other, you know, problems or future risks to the city, I guess, or?
I believe the others were actually encroaching right into the park. This, this deck did have a set of stairs going down into the park, which the homeowners have removed.
Okay.
So the encroachment is now removed from the parkland. What we're dealing with is a setback variance, unlike the others where.
They were on the.
They were right in the park, similar to what the stairs were of this one.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Jevakoff and Counselor Wilbur?
So if this variance wasn't approved, would that mean that they would have to either take down five feet of deck or buy five feet of the property?
Yes, they would have to remove the deck to meet the setback requirements under the bylaw today. Failing that, they would have to purchase enough of the parkland so that it would meet the setback requirements as established by the city.
Yeah.
This doesn't look like a normal deck. Like, we're, this looks a little bit more sophisticated than just a normal deck.
There's a sunroom as well with it.
Counselor Wilbur?
So the yellow line around this property is the property line. So if I'm looking at this correctly, also their driveway and landscaping encroaches outside of their property line to the front of the house?
It would appear that, yes.
And, and no variance has been asked for, for that?
Not in the request that came to council on this request from the homeowners.
Thank you.
Further discussion? On the amendment that we remove the trees first. You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And on the main motion, which is to approve the variance, you ready for the question?
No, I'm not. I am, so this, this little map here, yeah, that parking stuff, what, why are we not dealing with that at the same time?
The direction from council and how we approach it is on a complaint-driven basis on encroachments.
As it relates to Chamberlain Park?
It was, it was initiated with a complaint three years, this is before my time.
Yes.
But the way we go on this so far with the direction of council, we have about, I believe, 287 encroachments in the city. I think is the number that rings a bell. There are two ways to go about it. One, the city can be proactive and approach and deal with each one. Or the direction to date that administration has received is this is driven by a complaint basis. So we're happy to accommodate council's wishes with whatever that would be.
So we're looking at a line here that also is a GPS line. So maybe Nick, you want to?
Yeah, yes, through your worship. The lines on the air photo are not 100% accurate. It's very important to note that. The driveway does extend over the property line, not to the same extent as that air photo. If I could, this one. So this air photo appears to be the 2016 air photo. The 2013 air photo is actually more accurate. So as you can see, there is a space between the deck and the property line. That space in reality does not exist. So that kind of shows you the extent of the distortion of the air photo. Let's see, was there anything else I was going to add to that? Yeah. So, so basically the, the air photo is not 100% accurate, but we do know the driveway does extend over the property line. How much? I'm not 100% sure.
Even, and so I think we should really take that, if you look at the photo, the house next to it, that shows the property line right up at the house. So you know that it's not, there's no, the accuracy of this air photo, it doesn't accurately and truly depict property lines. Counselor Parzol?
No, thank you for all that. That's good. But going back to staff's statement, which this was driven by a complaint three years ago, and that was encroachment into the park. So this encroachment of the, part of the driveway is not an encroachment into the park, but it's into publicly owned property. Is that, so therefore you, your direction from council is to deal with this encroachment into the park? And that's why just this part is being dealt with rather than this part? Is that the reasoning? I'm just trying to understand.
I, I believe so and I stand to be correct. I don't believe the encroachment that we're talking about now on the south side being the driveway is parkland. Brenda, I would have to look to you for that clarification. I believe it's probably city land on right of way.
Yeah, through your worship, that is the city boulevard, not the city park.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to approve the variance? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
Can I get the votes on?
It was opposed was Wilbur, Jevakoff, and Kemp. And in favor was Earl, Parzol, myself, and Dober. Do you want to redo the vote?
Well, yeah, but the thing is, people don't vote. I'm saying that's counsel positive.
Yeah.
Did you know that, Dars?
Yeah, I just wasn't quick enough.
You'll slide over something.
Still processing everything.
We call those legacy challenges.
Thank you. Item 7.6, we have report number 20207 from the city planner, and this is a request, request to close a walkway and purchased by the resident. Counselor Jevakoff?
Move the report number 20-207. I'm on the right one, eh?
Yeah.
Yep.
Ask Dars.
From the city planner, we request to purchase and close walkway at 88th Avenue, 88th and 89th Avenue. We received, further that council approve the sale of and closure of the walkway, subject to a successful public notification period. Further, that council waive the requirement for a neighborhood petition.
Thank you. Do I have a second or Counselor Parzol, discussion? Counselor Jevakoff?
I'm glad to see that we have another solution to another trespass here. And I have to compliment the administration for dealing with this and coming up with a, a solution.
Thank you. And the neighborhood petition is a process we would go through to solicit the input from the directly affected neighbors. And a 30-day notification period gives the neighbors the opportunity, should they wish to give input. It's just another step that we're saying not necessary for our staff to undertake. Am I correct in that, Brenda?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 7.7, we have report number 20206 from the public works manager regarding a fleet replacement request.
Thanks.
Counselor Jevakoff?
Move the report number 20-206 from the public works manager be received. Further, the council direct, council direct staff to advertise a request for quotation to replace fleet unit UT-10.
Thank you. Do I have a second or Counselor Kemp? Discussion? Counselor Jevakoff?
So is this normal? I don't remember ever approving the replacement of a vehicle before.
I think normally we have the equipment pool and when the replacement of vehicles are up, they bring them forward to council for approval.
This is outside the normal cycle as a result of problems with the frame that they have found on this truck. So that's why it's here before council and where we're funding it.
Okay.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And report 7.8, we have report number 20208 from the general manager of development services regarding a proposed paving plan for 2022 to 2025. Motion to receive for discussion? Counselor Parzol, second. Counselor Earl, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Blair, do you want to go walk us through?
Your worship, we had talked earlier about the opportunity to do some major upgrades to the road infrastructure in the city of Dawson Creek. I think it would be fair to say a number of challenges are faced out there on our roadworks. We began doing it. You have the replacement on 15th this year is a, obviously, a very welcome addition. But what this would show you is what could be accomplished for the amount of roughly $20 million. This would show that should the city proceed to look at the opportunity, they would look at a borrowing of $20 million over a number of years, $5 million per year for four consecutive years. The maps attached to this and the description is laid out as what can be achieved. You will note that Kevin has put in here, these are some preliminary numbers based on what we know today. There's a real opportunity that more could be accomplished for that funding. But this will go hand in hand with council's decision on whether to move forward with the borrowing or not. This could not be accomplished without the borrowing requirement that is attached to it. I do believe Kevin is on the phone if he is interested in speaking to this. But the map, again, we have worked with our pavement assessment reports as well. I think everybody is well aware of those and come up with what is a pretty good cross-section of the roads that need to be dealt with immediately. That's not to say that there may not be changes made by council in looking at. There may be some fine tuning. Do you do all of, I'll use 96th Avenue from 8th to 17th, or do we look at a portion less than that? That one alone is about a $7 million job, just 96th Avenue from 8th to 17th. The other thing that's very important is council has made a very, I think, very good decision, supported by Kevin and his crew, that says, look, if we're going to do roadworks, we're also going to ensure that what's below those roadworks are put up to standard. So if they were in need of repair two or three years down the road, we're not going to pave a road today, three years later, dig that road up and do underground work. We do it all at the same time in the city now, as was seen on the 15th Street reconstruction and other ones we've done.
Thank you. Discussion? Counselor Parzol, then Counselor Earl?
Yes, one of the consistent themes in the community dialogue is the, the satisfaction with our roads and some of our sidewalks. That's always a problem for every northern community. Nothing will be perfect. Part of the problem for the magnitude of this need, and I think it applies, and do stand, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, is the 96th Avenue. I think the local initiative, improvement initiatives were defeated for that particular avenue. Is that correct?
I am not sure. Is Kevin on the phone? Kevin?
Yeah, good afternoon.
Hello.
So 96th Avenue, in my time with the city, which is now 24 years, I don't recall doing a local improvement on that one and having it turned down. So I don't, I don't believe it was contemplated during that time period.
Is it 94th then, that I've got in my little head?
Yeah, 94th is correct. You did look at that.
What's two avenues? Okay, but anyway, then the road deteriorates to a degree that is a major, major repair job. So all this is, again, fill me in on this one, staff. Have we abandoned, set aside the concept of local area improvement initiatives?
We are.
As a council or?
Sorry, through your worship, we are bringing something forward in the budget discussions that are coming up. The first one, draft one on the 23rd. The problem, and you've stated this, counselor, the problem with the ability to say yes or no for the homeowners, what happens is people, we've in the past gone out, had a project, the residents on that street can agree or disagree. If they disagree, then the project doesn't move ahead. They've signed. Only to find out that it would have cost, and I'll just use round numbers, maybe it was an $800,000 fix at that time. The years go by, the road deterior- Uh, the years go by, the road deteriorates to the point of no return, and it's now a two and a half million dollar fix, of which is an incredibly high cost when you could have fixed it for eight hundred thousand. So we're looking at different alternatives. Council has not made any decisions on that yet, but we'll be entertaining that discussion in the very near future to say, should we put the entire body of the city at risk to incur greater cost if one group of people don't want to improve a road when in fact it has to be done? That's the discussion that will happen at that point.
Thank you. Councillor Earl? Councillor Jevetkov?
Thank you, your worship. Um, one or two questions through you to staff. So, uh, as you mentioned, these, uh, this work would involve just entire rebuilds, including water and sewer underneath. Um, are these projects broken down, uh, by water, sewer and road, or is it all going, would the debt servicing all end in general revenue, or would a portion of that be in the water and sewer funds?
It would be separated.
Separated? And what is the tentative, I know these are all kind of general figures because of nature of the work. Are we talking like a seventy, thirty split, twenty, eighty?
You know, I'm going to ask Kevin to answer that. I'm, and again, I don't want to say that every road we do will require underground work, but the ones that do will be ensured to be done at the same time. So Kevin?
Yeah, so through your worship, uh, the majority of it's going to be obviously the roadwork, the, uh, the base, the pavement, the sidewalk and street lighting. We allow for, uh, all the water valves to be replaced. We look at the master plans for, uh, sewer and drainage to see if there needs to be upsizing or replacement. So it does vary. It's not a clean cut, uh, percentage, but I would, you know, if I was going to put something on it, I'd say it's probably an easy seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, ballpark. That'll vary a bit depending on the job, but that's probably a guide.
So, thank you, Kevin. So then in reality, this would be over the, the four-year term, fifteen million dollars worth of debt in being serviced through general revenue? And what is the current rate we would borrow at?
We would start, if council chose to move forward with a four-year, twenty million dollar borrowing, um, the rates, I don't have them in front of me, Flavio. You would start the process, this would be for twenty twenty-two, would be the first year this could be implemented because of the lead time required to put your borrowing bylaw in place and to get that rid.
Yeah, so-
Go ahead.
Yeah, through your worship, they updated the rate, the last one that I saw for ten years, uh, borrowing is about one point forty-seven percent a year, so it's pretty low.
And for comparing and contrasting, we borrowed, what, five point eight percent for the event center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would suggest you probably, to get much lower, they would have to pay us to borrow money.
Flavio?
Yeah, through your worship, I also would like to add that considering that you are increasing the debt service, of course, there is an impact how you're going to fund the debt. So doing a preliminary analysis, assuming this one point forty-seven percent MFA ten years, we are talking about an average of three percent of property tax increase just to pay off of this in the next four years, just to be around.
No. For each borrowing?
Uh, if we borrow like five million in four years consecutively, that means a three percent increase in property tax for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, to be able to pay off the first borrowing.
And, and-
Councillor Earl, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm carrying on here, this last, so any of that, I know we've got some debt coming off the books over the next few years, how much of that is offset? None of it? That's in addition to?
No, because through your worship, when I projected five years' budget, it's always assuming a red, the reduction of which we've been paying off, right? There is a major, uh, payoff coming by two thousand twenty-seven, exactly, that would be a significant reduction there, uh, but the first, two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five, you are topping up still with the value that you have in the books.
Councillor Jevetkov?
So just looking at the, the projects, four projects, thirty-three million dollars in total, uh, estimated, um, is there a possibility, because we're confirming the budget through borrowing, is there a possibility that we could tender all four projects at once, thinking that, uh, with a volume like that, we would get probably a significant reduction in, uh, bids?
Um, that may be a possibility. Obviously, it would be over a number of years. I don't think we would be able to have all of that work, uh, done in one year. So if what we're thinking is we would tender it as a package to be completed over X years, and we could set the, uh, schedule of which ones we want to first, I think that is doable. The other thing that should be noted is what we're talking about here is outside of the roadwork we had planned originally. This is looking at twenty million dollars over four years.
So there's a possibility, if we can do that, and we get a reduced bid, there's a possibility we could apply that to our other roadwork as well. So, you know, I, I can see a, a lot of, uh, benefits to going this route.
Councillor Earl?
Uh, so if we were to, as Councillor Jevetkov suggests, tender this as a package, uh, with the intent of getting better pricing from contractors, I'm just thinking back to, uh, previous conversations we've had with Kevin and his department about the pre-work involved in getting these projects ready to go, and it's about a ten percent cost of the project just to do the preliminary work. So we're talking about potentially a three million dollar plus spend so we can tender it, and I'm not sure what the timeline on that is, but I, I don't know. That's, uh, a lot of money to put into pre-work without adding, uh, a yard of pavement down.
Councillor Dover?
Uh, there's a lot going on. I mean, this is a big project and, I don't know, like, I guess there's lots of questions, where's the city's debt servicing at? Like, if you were to borrow this, does it, you know, put us, leverage us in a different position for if other things come up in the future? And I agree that pavement needs to be done, but do we wait till the event center's paid off and freed up, what, three million dollars in debt servicing that we could then commit to these residents that that money will be used to fix these streets and, you know, and set it up? But, I don't know, anytime I'm borrowing money, like, mass amounts like that, there's a million questions that go into it, and, you know, and you can't predict over four years. I mean, we don't know in two years if something else major happens and we got to borrow some money to do something else. Like, it's just a big commitment.
Your worship, maybe if I could lend some context to this, and I agree, this report is based on, probably the key factor is the budget, approving the budget in the future. So it's really a two-step process. One, if council is receptive to trying to move forward to do this type of roadwork in the future over the next number of years, starting in twenty twenty-two, that would be contingent on approving the budget as we present it, which will have scenarios to say, here is the budget without the twenty million borrowing, here's your costs, here's what it means to the budget, and here is your budget with the twenty million borrow- at which time council would make a determination. If council at that time adopted a budget to not move forward with the borrowing, hand in hand goes, this wouldn't move forward as well. But we start, we wanted to bring it forward so people could have a view of what could be accomplished. We had talked about it in our previous, um, meetings in, in this case. Um, so saying if this is accepted today, it really hinges on where council lands on the twenty twenty-one budget and the five-year plan moving forward.
Go ahead, one more?
Just the other part of that, the three percent, um, increase on taxes, is that just to cover the debt servicing portion of this?
Yes.
Not the repayment of the?
Oh.
Yeah, the debt services, when we, we talk about debt service includes the interest and the payment.
Principal.
So the principal, uh, so-
Over like a, obviously larger span than four years?
Ten.
Ten years for each.
Borrowed for ten years, okay.
But the impact would be three percent for twenty twenty-two, another three percent for twenty twenty-three, another three percent, so you're, you've got a twelve percent tax increase just to repay that debt over that ten-year period. Right. Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, the, uh, the longer one waits to repair, the more expensive it becomes. It is, um, it's not linear, it's an exponential. So, uh, like, we had a very nice improvement to the city right adjacent to the college. Again, that is ninety-something avenue, isn't it? No, is that a?
Hundred and twelfth.
Hundred and twelfth avenue, that's right, one's right. Very nice. Uh, that was a very expensive project. Uh, Kevin, do you know what that was?
Two million?
Uh, yes, so through your worship, uh, you were speaking of a hundred and twelfth last year's project.
Yes.
Yeah, that was, uh, if I remember correctly, just over three, around three million dollars.
Three million, yeah. And that had, was, became more expensive because it had been left too long. It wasn't just the resurfacing, the whole structure of the road. So this debt, i- i- in the end, it ends up costing the taxpayers more money by not dealing with it immediately. Um, yeah, but this is, this is the fiscal gap. To ma- to maintain your adequate infrastructure, right? It's, it's got ahead of us, and therefore we have to catch up. It's all part of that equation. Um, concerning other capital projects, there's only one I'm aware of that's on the books is the hundred and second avenue bridge. And, uh, is that, that's the only other one that we know of. I mean, emergencies do happen. Is that, is that correct assumption for this discussion?
We have a number, I see Brenda want to, go ahead, Brenda.
Oh, just, um, I just wanted to mention with regards to the timelines, we had a twelve-thirty in-.
We have a twelve-thirty, so-
And then a one o'clock open. So I would suggest maybe referring the discussion until after the one o'clock?
Yeah, I was going to give it till twelve-twenty and, and so, we're getting close.
Two minutes, someone go.
Yeah, we have a twelve-thirty delegation, so.
We can do it and listen to it.
So it's this appropriate time, I think, that we will, uh, take a, a recess and adjourn this discussion. Uh, Brenda?
Yes, and it would need, uh, motion to go into closed.
Perfect. So we'll defer this, uh, discussion until after this afternoon when we're finished, and, uh, if we can have a motion to, uh, recess, our open and to move to closed. Councillor Wilbur, Councillor Earl, um, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? So we're back at twelve-thirty for our close.
Enjoy your ten minutes for lunch.
So what we do, we did bring lunch in-
Yes.
And back to order, and, um, our, uh, delegation this afternoon at, to one o'clock is, uh, Marina Zazapovic, and, uh, the representative consultant from Urban Matters, and, uh, we're going to have a presentation on the draft housing needs assessment report, uh, for the city, and this housing needs assessment report was done in partnership, or actually in, as, in combination with and through the Peace River Regional District, who, uh, got the funding to do the, uh, housing needs analysis study for a number of communities, as well as the PRRD, and City of Dawson Creek partnered in it. And so this has been a long time in the works, a long time coming, uh, as they say, and, um, so I'm really, really happy to have, um, Urban Matters and Marina give us the presentation and the overview today of, uh, the housing needs analysis. So good afternoon, Marina, welcome, and I'll pass the, uh, microphone over to you.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mayor Bunsen and council. Uh, thanks for having me here. I just want to confirm that everyone can hear me?
Yep.
Yes, yep.
Okay, perfect. So I'm going to be sharing my screen for my presentation, so give me one second here.
How did you do that?
Hey, IT guy.
There we go. Hopefully, uh, we have no technology issues, but it looks so good, good so far. Um, so thanks for the introduction. My name's Marina Yozipovich. I am one of the consultants working on this project from Urban Matters. Uh, we were retained, uh, by the PRRD, um, for this project, um, in partnership with the other partners, uh, that all, uh, list, as well as City of Dawson Creek. Um, we've been heavily involved in housing needs reports for, for a number of years, uh, but especially since the housing needs requirements, um, were initiated last year. Um, so we've done a number of these regional studies, uh, including obviously PRRD, but Mount Waddington, Thrakona, Capital Regional District and others. Um, so I will be spending the bulk of my presentation, uh, presenting on the findings, um, of Dawson's Creek's, uh, housing report, but I'm going to spend a few slides just introducing the legislation, legislative requirements, as well as the partnership, um, and, and in the project process. Uh, so as of twenty nineteen, uh, the province of British Columbia amended the local government act to require all local governments to complete housing needs reports by twenty twenty-one, um, with the expectation that these will be completed every five years. And the intent of these is to provide detailed housing information, uh, to inform, uh, community policies and directions. Um, I will just make a note on, um, the census, because the housing needs reports heavily emphasize census information, and the last census was completed in twenty sixteen, and the next one will be completed by twenty twenty-one. But the results from the twenty twenty-one census won't be available in time for the first housing needs report. Um, and one of the things that we just generally mentioned is that, uh, it's, these are, uh, most relevant when they're completed close to the census years, um, but that, uh, you know, one of the things that we do is we not only look at statistics, but we look at stakeholder engagement to help triangulate our findings. Uh, so the purpose of the housing needs reports, um, are to inform a number of planning and policy initiatives, especially official community plans. They're really intended to provide that housing information to inform OCPs, but they can also be used by local governments to inform non-market and affordable housing policies, inform economic development initiatives, zoning bylaws, development approvals, regional growth strategies. Uh, one of the things we find often is that they're not only for local governments, housing needs reports can also inform and support other housing initiatives. So we often, the nonprofits, refer to these housing needs reports to help with their funding applications to demonstrate need, or for the local governments to help identify housing priorities to inform support for which projects they support in their community. Um, so this project is a regional project with eight of the Peace River Regional District communities, including Dawson Creek, as well as Chetwind, Hudson's Hope, Husky, um, and regional, uh, the regions representing the electoral areas. So you'll notice there are a couple of, uh, Peace River communities not on this list, and that could be, this is pretty normal for these regional approaches, and it's, uh, because they're either completing their, or they've already completed them, or they want to do them on their own for whatever reason, uh, but this project is being done in partnership with these communities. A little bit about our study process, um, there's been a lot of work, as you can imagine, for eight communities, uh, over the last few months. We started the project off in June, um, and spent June and July collecting and analyzing the statistical data through our information review. Uh, so the housing needs reports requirement asks, um, for a lot of data collection from Statistics Canada and the censuses, um, as well as EC stats, EC housing, um, and a, a range of other, uh, statistical data sources. In July and August, we went, uh, through to our stakeholder and public engagement, and this included a, a community-wide survey, uh, for all residents, as well as interviews and focus groups, uh, with stakeholders, um, by which I mean, uh, we invited housing providers, service providers, uh, those in the private market and other participate and share their perspective on the housing system in Dawson Creek and the region. Um, over September, we completed our analysis. So once we do all our data collection, which includes both the stats, but also the stakeholder and what we hear from the public, um, we look at it all together and analyze it to see what are the communities that are coming out of this. And into October, we did our reporting, so a draft report was prepared for Dawson Creek, as well as the other partner communities. In November, we are presenting these to the board, the regional board, as well as, uh, four councils, uh, to present the findings and to collect feedback. Um, once that's complete, we're going to be finalizing the report, and, um, there is an additional component to this project that's not from the housing needs reports requirement, is kind of the next step, uh, with what to do with these findings, and that's phase six, which is our best practice in policy review, um, which will happen later this year, and I'll provide a bit more detail about that later in the presentation. And so without further ado, I'm going to spend a number of slides, uh, presenting at a high level some of our findings, um, and then I'll get into our next step. Uh, so in terms of population growth, I will just re- reemphasize, we're, we're going to be, um, discussing census data, recognizing that it is a couple of years old, but it is the best available of population-wide data that we can develop at this time. Um, so between two thousand and sixteen, Dawson Creek gained eleven hundred and eighty-four residents, and growing by ten percent, which is quite a bit faster than the region overall, which grew by five percent. Um, as of twenty sixteen, Dawson Creek made up twenty percent of the regional population, um, and the population projections that are in the report anticipate that since twenty sixteen, there have been some fluctuations in the population, um, with an overall slight de- there have been some fluctuations in the population, um, with an overall slight decline by 2025. And these are based on regional growth trends, um, that were prepared for Dawson Creek. Uh, when it comes to age, Dawson's, Dawson Creek's age distribution is comparable to the Peace River Regional District, as you can see in the graph. The first three columns are, um, Dawson Creek's top age distribution over time, and the last one is the regional age distribution in 2016. It's remained relatively steady. I will just say that there's been a slight increase in the population of residents 65 and over, and a slight decrease in the population of residents over 14. Overall, though, Dawson Creek has a younger population with a median age of 34.4, which is comparable to the region overall at 32.1, and generally much lower median age than what we see across, in, in many communities, which are experiencing a faster aging trend. When it comes to tenure, which is, uh, the proportion of renters and owners of the community, Dawson Creek has a relatively high proportion of renters. So, as of 2016, 61% of households own their home and 39% rented. And you can see there's been a pretty steady increase, uh, between 2006 and 2016. Um, and the proportion of renter households is higher than the region overall, as in owner portion is obviously lower. Um, while both the region and Dawson Creek saw those changing trends with, uh, a lower proportion of owners and a higher proportion of renters, that, that trend was more pronounced in Dawson Creek's region overall. Uh, one of the things we really look at is median household income by tenure. And, uh, a very common trend across communities is that renter household incomes tend to be far lower than owner household income. Typically, between 50, 50 to 60%, um, around there, uh, is, is the proportion. Uh, so you can see, um, as of 2016, uh, the owner household, uh, median income was $97,000, around there, um, a bit lower than the regional district overall, which was $108,900. Um, and renter income, median renter income in Dawson Creek is also lower than the region overall. A median income in Dawson Creek increased by 27% since 2006 and 2016, so slightly higher than the region overall at 24%. When we look at dwellings in the community, uh, housing, the housing distribution in Dawson Creek is relatively similar to what we see across the region, with 64% of single, uh, homes that are single detached dwellings. Um, one thing that Dawson Creek is slightly different, it does a higher proportion of, uh, low-rise apartments. Um, so 18% of homes in 2016 were, were low-rise apartments. Um, one thing that we noticed in the stats is that our renter households are much more likely to be occupying those apartments, so recognizing a large proportion of renter households, and 44% of renter households occupied those low-rise apartments, so we're seeing a portion of housing for them. When it comes to housing stock by age, Dawson Creek has, um, an older housing stock than the region overall. So, you can see from the graph, uh, 23% of homes in Dawson Creek were built in 1954 or earlier, compared to only 11% of the Peace River Regional District. And so, one of the things that we are to notice, um, when we get into that kind of housing that we're seeing, is that this older housing stock is likely linked to a higher proportion of homes that require major repairs, which is one of the indicators that I'll talk about in housing. So, 9% or 470% of Dawson Creek were identified as requiring major repairs in 2015. One of the key stats that we look at when it comes to housing need are housing indicators. And so, these are national stats collected by Statistics Canada of three main measures. The first is suitability. The home is considered suitable if it has enough bedrooms for its household. So, when it's considered unsuitable, typically it's too small, there are not enough bedrooms for all the adults and children in the home. Uh, the other inadequate is adequacy. So, a home is considered adequate if it requires no or minor repairs. And it's considered inadequate if it requires major repairs. And a home is considered unaffordable if the household spends 30% or more of their gross household income on, on housing. Um, and so what this, the stat on the left, the graph on the left shows is housing indicators for Dawson Creek for all households. And so, you can see about 26% of all households are living in not suitable housing, so it's too small for them. 9% are living in inadequate housing, so housing that requires major repairs. And 20% are, um, living in, in unaffordable housing. So, they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And you can see owners and renters have slightly different, um, experiences. So, while owners do have some issues around, especially inadequacy and unaffordability, um, the, the key thing that renters are experiencing is unaffordability, with 36% of renter households in 2016, or 600 new households, um, experiencing, uh, unaffordable rental costs. And the graph on the right breaks this information into senior households specifically. Um, and, and there are some different trends happening for senior households. So, overall, 26% of senior households are, are, uh, were facing unaffordability in 2016. But the stat that really stands out here is that the renter households that are seniors, uh, 57% were, were spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs, reflecting that affordability is a bigger issue in senior households compared to the overall population. The other stat that we look, we look at closely at is core housing need. So, core housing need reflects, um, those stats, those three indicators. So, a household where they're not meeting at least one of the housing indicators, but meeting multiple, and they're not able to afford, uh, median rents in the community, or median housing costs in the community. Um, and extreme core housing need is that same definition, except those households are currently spending 50% or more of their income. So, when you're spending that much of your income on housing costs, uh, you, there tends to be greater, it's, it's more precarious, um, you know, you're more likely to be, and, and more at risk if things go wrong. So, what this, this graph shows is, uh, core housing need. So, those are folks, um, just core housing need, extreme core housing need, and then the total of core housing need plus extreme core housing need. So, overall, um, Dawson Creek has a higher proportion of households in core housing need in the region overall, with 15.2% compared to 10.1%. When we break this down in between renter and owner households, we see a big difference. And this is typical, but it's, it's quite pronounced in Dawson Creek. Um, so among owner households, 4.3% are in core housing need, and 1.5% are in extreme core housing need. But among renter households, um, 16.8% are in core housing need, and another 13.2% are in core housing need, reflecting quite, uh, different experiences in housing. Um, so one of the things that core housing need tells us is that these households are experiencing housing issues, and they can't afford to move. Um, so that's why, uh, it's one of the most significant indicators we look at. Um, I'm gonna shift into our, uh, community and stakeholder engagement, and then present the findings based on other requirements of the housing needs reports. Um, so, uh, the community, um, survey was open, uh, in the summer. We had a really good turnout from Dawson Creek. We had 174 respondents, um, respond to the, the community survey, and we were very happy about that. In addition, we did, um, interviews, and I should have a small focus group, um, with a, a number of folks, um, the First Nations, regional officials with housing providers and service providers. And we asked them to help us, um, to share their experiences on the ground of, of what challenges, barriers, and unmet needs they were seeing in housing and housing-related services, potential opportunities, as well as potential best practices and strategies to help address housing need. Um, so we did some, uh, interviews that had a focus on the region as a whole, and we pulled some of those findings, um, in the, in the report that you'll see. And then we also did some interviews with specific organizations working in Dawson Creek, including, uh, Network Ministries, uh, two branches of the South East Community Resources Society, Better Home and Housing in Big League, and Access to Family Resources. Uh, so this graph shows, um, the results from the survey. This is the top five key housing challenges identified by survey respondent. And you'll see that there are some themes that are coming from the survey that were reflected in some of the findings that I just shared. So, the, the most commonly selected housing challenge in Dawson Creek was the high cost of renting, with 68% of respondents identifying this one. And then you'll see seniors' housing shows up a number of times. So, 63% of respondents said there's a lack of supportive housing for seniors. 57% of seniors that have adequate at-home care, and 39% of respondents had options for seniors. And I'll just reflect that we saw in the, um, housing indicators for seniors that unaffordability, especially for renter senior households, uh, was a major challenge. And then 42% of respondents, uh, selected that a high cost of buying a home was a champ, a challenge in Dawson Creek. Um, one of the things that the housing needs reports requires is reporting on housing needs across, um, six, uh, key, uh, categories, and those are affordable housing, supportive, and, uh, special needs housing, rental housing, housing for seniors, housing for families and homelessness. So, I'm gonna be summarizing the, the findings across those categories, and then moving on to our next step. Um, when it comes to affordable housing, we saw that 41%, um, we, we saw unaffordably was an issue for renter households. And in the survey, 41% of renter respondents indicated that their rental costs were too high. Um, 12% of the homeowner respondents, and the 23% of renters respondents indicated that they were uncertain of whether they will be able to afford their mortgage or rent in the next five years. Uh, when it comes to supportive and special needs housing, uh, we heard, uh, that there's a lack of supportive housing in Dawson Creek, um, for individuals with disabilities, so that there have been improvements in years. Uh, there's a need for supportive housing for individuals with intellectual or physical disabilities, homeless individuals and out of vulnerable populations. And there's a need for support for individuals experiencing mental health challenges. When it comes to rental housing, um, we saw, and in the report is reflected, that the availability of rental units, or the stock of rental has decreased from 2016, and median rental prices have stayed relatively consistent. Uh, as we saw, 30% of renter households were living in poor housing need in 2016, which is significant. And stakeholders indicated a major concern with the high cost and lack of available rental housing in the community. When it comes for housing for seniors, um, 15, uh, we saw in the, in the survey, I won't even state that here, but a high proportion of survey respondents felt that there were, there was a lack of seniors' housing options in the community, and stakeholders through the interviews prioritized aging in place and access to healthcare and financial support services for seniors. When it comes, uh, to housing for families, uh, what we generally found is that families in the community are generally well-served by the housing choices available, with the exception of lower-income households, especially those renting, um, or those where members are experiencing mental health addictions or other challenges. Um, 64% of households in the community are, are occupied by one or two individuals. Um, so smaller households in Dawson Creek have a lower proportion of family households, and a higher proportion of one-person nonsensical family households in the PRRD overall. When it comes to homelessness, stakeholders reported an increase in the homeless population over the past five years, and 50% of survey respondents indicated that emergency or homeless shelters were needed in the community, um, as current service providers are struggling to provide adequate support. And we also heard from stakeholders that homeless youth and homeless individuals with mental health or addictions challenges need additional support and management is available for them in the community. We also identified some other areas of the local need that were relevant for Dawson Creek, but didn't necessarily fit into those six categories required by the housing needs report. Um, so just, this is really context. We know across the region, there's significant number of workforce development, and that population isn't reflected in the community data, but can have implications for community housing, um, but, uh, there's not good, great data to, to validate that. Um, we heard from stakeholders, uh, who indicated that there's a need for shelters for vulnerable women, including those leaving abusive relationships or in violent situations, um, but that currently many have to travel to Port St. John to access the services. Uh, survey respondents indicated, um, that they, uh, some had and many anticipated future challenges when it comes to housing condition and their ability to be repaired, which reflects some of the data that we saw of a proportion of homes, uh, that require repairs. Um, and we heard from stakeholders that there's a lack of transit options for residents, which impacts, uh, residents' ability to travel around the city, and, um, it impacts their availability of housing. In terms of next steps, so we completed our draft report, uh, we're doing our presentations, and we're gonna be, based on feedback from the presentations, we're gonna be finalizing our housing needs report, um, at the end of this month and into December. Uh, in the new year, we'll be diving into the policy recommendations and looking to finalize and present those in February. Uh, in terms of what the policy recommendations will include, this is, this will go through a number of steps. Um, we're gonna be reviewing, uh, both the regional policies around housing, as well as, uh, you know, Dawson Creek's policies and the other communities that are part of the project. And we're gonna be reflecting on roles for local government in addressing housing, uh, reflecting that there are some goal, roles that the, uh, local government is traditionally playing, for example, regulations, um, things like that. But that roles, the role of local government in housing is changing over time, especially as housing choose across the province and supply. Um, so, and then the next step will be linking the housing gaps of the housing needs report with a best practices review. So, what across the province and other parts of Canada is working well to address those housing gaps. And ultimately, we'll be providing top three to five kind of high impact potential actions for each of the partners on this project, um, with examples of implementation as part of our policy recommendations. So, with that, I will, we'll turn it back to you, and I want to say thank you for inviting me today. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you so much, Marina. Uh, obviously, that was, uh, some really great information and data, and I think that's, to me, the purpose of what we were hoping to achieve through this. So, I really appreciate, uh, this initial cut of, uh, some of that information. So, to Council, Counselor Wilbur?
Um, yeah, I just, for clarification, for those that are watching, when you talk about 53% for supportive housing for seniors, would that be something like Rotary Manor, or like a facility that would be, offer supportive housing versus the 39% for adequate at-home care? So, that's a service that we're lacking for people to access, to have, stay at home. So, I just want clarification that supportive housing meant something like Rotary Manor, where it's a facility, um, that they can have that support within their home, but not at home?
Yes, exactly. So, supportive care options for seniors typically look, um, like assisted living or residential care, but they can also be independent living options. Um, for example, seniors' housing complex with independent living units, that maybe there are some services in the building, um, that, that those households can access.
Perfect, thank you.
But they're not at home.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Further questions or comments for Council? Counselor Earl?
Uh, just a question and a comment, your worship. First, uh, the question, on page, uh, 43, I guess, section 5.45, under Services and Infrastructure, there's a phrase I was hoping you could give me some clarification on. "Survey participants also suggested that utility infrastructure in Dawson Creek should be updated to make living in the community more desirable and well-served." What specific infrastructure are we talking about, like internet connectivity, water, sewer?
Can you, I'm so sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Sorry, is that better?
I think so, can you repeat the question?
My apologies, thank you. Um, so, in the draft report itself, section 5.45, which is on page 43, at the very bottom, there's, uh, there's Services and Infrastructure. It says, "Survey participants also suggested that utility infrastructure in Dawson Creek should be updated to make living in the community more desirable and well-served." I was just hoping for some clarification around what exactly that's referencing.
Oh, I see, um. That is something I can, um, I can dig into a little bit, uh, deeper. Uh, in some cases, you know, we, we summarized what we heard, but survey participants didn't provide a ton of detail. Um, but it, it's, it's okay, we can kind of look into the raw results and add a little bit more detail there on the next round of edits.
Great, thank you very much, that would be appreciated. And one, one last comment, in, in reading the report, um, I know, I, I mean, I know we've had probably some decline in our population since the, the Wild West heyday of 2015, and the decline in, uh, the price of oil and, and natural gas, and that industry is, uh, much slower than it once was. This is the first time I'm seeing that our population declined by like a thousand-plus people over the last five years, and that's a very dramatic figure for me in, um, having read the report. Uh, it's just something I wanted to make comment of, because as we, uh, you know, look at the state of our local economy, and our housing market, and our tax base, and the services we, we provide, that's, uh, I'm very interested to see how those numbers, uh, end up stacking up once the, uh, Statistics Canada next year. I guess next year would be the update for the, um, census. So, I'll be interested to see what that looks like. But that certainly, uh, was a very stark figure for me to see, and I just wanted to make a comment of that.
So, on population?
Yeah, in the, the draft report, it looks like.
So, I, one, mine shows 10.9 in 2006, 11.5 in 2011, and 12.1 in 2016?
Yes, and then they, they extrapolate out on that, not using census data, but using some, uh, assumptions that, um, 2016 to 2020, we are down 11. assumptions that 2016 to 2020, we are down 1191. On page, sorry, in the draft report, page 36, projected population change by age, so 2016 to 2020, they had us down 1191, I'm not sure. Like I said, I'm interested to see how the census compares to that, but that was a very stark, you know, the prospect of having lost almost 10% of our population over the last five years. I have a hard time believing it, but I don't, until I see an apples-to-apples comparison with the census, it'll be, I just wanted to make note of that, because that's the first time I'm seeing anything that dramatic, and it kind of set me on my backside.
Thank you. Councilor Parzall?
Well, I find the data very interesting and potentially very useful for planning. Just a couple of comments, the, I'm glad to see some quantification of the rental challenge for people. That parallels what I'm hearing, high rent, and I think, of course, to a degree, that is driven by the petroeconomy we operate with here, you know, and hopefully, maybe there's some correction to that. The, I also want to just say that from my experience on the Dawson Creek Society for Community Living, we have found that when you drill down deeper into some of this data, the picture changes. You get people's opinion, but when you look at what's informing that opinion, let's say about, they may say, well, there's a lack of affordable housing for seniors in Dawson Creek, and yet, they themselves are sitting on a, let's say, million-dollar-plus farm in the country, and they want to come into Dawson Creek, but they don't want that asset, they want that asset to pass on to their children, to their family. So we found, we found with our questionnaires, the picture gets changed rapidly when you, when you drill down and actually dig a little deeper with some of this data, but I think this is a very useful exercise and does reinforce some of my perceptions. But one question, what is meant by a nonsensuous family household?
Yeah, thank you for that question, and I apologize that I should have mentioned it earlier. Nonsensuous family households are typically individuals living alone. Generally, I think the status, probably 80% to 90% are individuals living alone, but it also includes a small, smaller proportion of individuals who might be living with roommates and other non-family members, so that's typically what nonsensuous family households.
So, I need to help you a little more there. Does that mean that they haven't participated in census, or they weren't captured by this particular exercise?
No, there, yeah, it's a little bit confusing when you say it that way. So it's not that it's nonsensuous, it's that it's not a census family. The census family is a definition, so for example, couples with children, couples without children, lone parent families, they're considered census families, and nonsensuous families are, they're just not part of a family, so they're not living with a family, and so they're not part of that census definition of a census family, but they are still captured by census.
Thank you. Councilor Jevkoff?
Yeah, I've got a question on the, basically, the change from ownership to renters. The percentage of renters has gone from 34% to 39. Does that correlate with the increase in population that we've experienced, or can we assume that the people that have moved here have all gone into rentals as opposed to buying?
We can't correlate it exactly and say this is how many of new households are renting versus buying, but what we are seeing is in terms of new population added to the community, the shift has been mostly in, more in renter households than in owner households, and so that's where we've seen that, that proportions change.
So there is no number there, that 34 to 39, there's not a number associated with that, eh?
There is, and I can pull that up just now. So, between 2006 and 2016, the owner population stayed relatively the same, so that doesn't mean it's the same owners, but the numbers didn't change. So in 2006, it was 3,060 owner households were counted, and in 2016, 3,055 owner households were counted. Renter households did grow quite a bit, so in 2006, 1,590 renter households were counted, and 2016, 1,985 were counted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parzall?
One set of questions. Other key areas of local need on your presentation. Stateholders indicated need for shelters for vulnerable women, including those leaving abusive relationships or fleeing violent situations, who currently have to travel to Fort St. John to access services. So we do have some shelter vision here. Are you saying that respondents are saying that we need more of them, or is there something?
Sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Are respondents saying that we need more shelters for vulnerable women, or do we need different type of services as provided for in Fort St. John? Are they doing something that we're not doing?
What we heard most was that there was a need for additional support, and I think generally what we found is in the engagement, that when people have to leave the community, it's because the capacity isn't there in Dawson Creek.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, questions for council? Obviously, Marina, sorry, we want to express our appreciation today for you guys giving us this initial cut of the data and the information. It's very, very informative and helpful, and hopefully, this is probably, for me, two or three or four or five years of trying to get to a point where we understand the data of that needs for what is driving the demand of what we need to do and consider for services for seniors, for affordable housing, for transitional housing. It's the first time we've really got some really good, hard data to be able to start to guide that decision-making process that council will be faced with and dealing with in the future. So thank you so much for giving us this information today, we appreciate it, and we look forward to the coming few months when we start to formalize some of that future work that you guys undertake.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, great job.
I'm taking a seven-minute break.
Oh, are you? Get rid of your soup?
Get rid of my soup.
So we're going to pick back up into our agenda on open, and we were at 7.8, and we are going to go back into discussion on the proposed paving plan. We can look at the screen though, I think, can we? Councilor Earl?
Thank you, worship, just trying to get my, change gears here, but I guess.
It's what we do best.
A lot of the cost-benefit analysis with respect to borrowing figures of this sum is contingent upon, you know, how much of this roadwork is going to be, going to prevent higher costs later, and how much, you know, are we going to save some by, is the cost of servicing this debt going to be offset by how much we might save by getting the work done prior to those roads failing and the price tag for replacing them going up? Because I'm not, given the city's current debt load, I'm not crazy about the prospect of borrowing, but I also recognize there's probably not going to be a time in the near distant future where there's going to be more beneficial rates. So I'm really, this is something I struggle with, I appreciate the information and the ambition of the plan, obviously, is something I think a lot of people who drive the roads day in and day out would welcome, but that cost-benefit piece is something I'm struggling with, is how much, if we wait until we've retired the debt on the event center and we have that extra $3, $3.5 million a year to play with, in the interim time, how much might have we cost ourselves in additional costs to repair or rebuild these roads that have since failed? And that's something I'm really.
Yeah, that's, the, there is no right or wrong answer to this discussion about debt versus building and maintaining infrastructure, and your point about what does it look like and what does it impact us in the future is the age-old question, how long is a piece of string? We have no idea what that's going to be until such time as you get there and you see, what did that road do and how did it impact it, and is it, does it make sense for us to fix it now versus letting it potentially deteriorate, and maybe it costs us more or maybe it doesn't? That's the, that's the real dilemma. Councilor Jevkoff?
So just a kind of an overview, in 2015, we had 11.2 kilometers that have, road that were basically failed. Now, we've been doing some work since then, but I drove around this last summer and looked at the roads that were yellow, which were poor to fair, and a lot of those have now gone into the failed to very poor category. So I don't think we've gained on anything with the work that we've done since 2015. There were a couple of years that we didn't do anything, so, you know, last year, or 2020, we did, or 2019, we did 112th Avenue, that was something, that was, you know, an addition, but we have more failed since 2015 than we've gained. So this project, the proposal, will pick up just over 10 clicks. If we wait, we spent $600,000 on patching this year, so we can assume that we'll be spending $600,000 a year on patching. Now, that's not, that's not pothole filling, that's patching. Those are sections of patching. An example is the road in front of the recycling, that whole road is considered a patch. Those are the additional costs that we run into, and that's an example of a road that was basically failed, very poor in 2015. Over the last few years, it's converted from asphalt to gravel, basically. You know, they did some pothole covering, I mean, there's no way you can pick up the potholes in that situation, so that's the additional cost that you run into. Now, I don't know what the interest is on 20 million, is it a couple hundred thousand or whatever? That's the number that we need to be looking at. The 3 million annual, I think, is the principal and the interest?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so the principal we have to pay anyways. But this year, to do these projects, and like I mentioned before, I think the big advantage, if we could do it in a lump-sum contract, and we tried this before with DGS Astro back about 15 years ago, and what happened, DGS, in order to keep the new paving companies out of town, they bid lower than they would normally, and it was a big advantage to us, we saved a lot of money in costs. And I think, you know, whether it's a new company that comes to town, if they've got a $33 million potential contract, it'll be a lot more appealing to them, you know, to bid according to get it. So I think there's a big advantage to this, and it'll catch us up, and then our regular money, we're still going to be spending the 4 million or whatever we're spending normally on the yellow roads, and eventually, we might even get to the green ones.
Thank you. Further discussion, further comments? Councilor Earl?
Just for clarifications, based on the report, we've got 8.2 million in 2022, 8.5 million in 2023, 8.8 million in 2024, and 8.2 million in 2025. So I assume, in addition to that $5 million borrowing, there's considerable amount of our existing capital budget also going into those projects.
Yes, that's how we do it now, with the PRA money or fair share revenue, and the work council's been doing is to shift more of that to the capital side.
Yeah, so just some clarification, because Paul just mentioned that we were going to do additional roads with that money in addition, and it's where it looked like it was all kind of in one basket here.
The 33, when you look at that number, yes.
Okay, yeah, no, I just want that clarification, thank you.
20 million in borrowing and 13 or 14 million coming from PRA each year to offset, to get to that 8 million or 9 million you're going to spend each year. Councilor Parzall?
Well, I've always been a supporter of this project, and I really would like to hope that we could get to a state whereby we could leverage this concept, as Paul has been talking about, so we can, I know there's lots of variables, but you know, if we take it forward as a block of four years' work, or a stoked sequence, that we should be able to get a much better, better price, let's say, price per kilometer or whatever way you want to measure it. So I think, I'd like us to see if we could, what happens with that concept.
Go ahead, Blair.
Your worship, through you, and certainly, I know Kevin is on the line, I believe, but that is something, if council decides to move forward with this project as far as the borrowing and the capital projects as outlined, we can look at that and bring something back. There may be, the first thing that jumps into mind would be that three years in, there may be a road that jumps out at us that has deteriorated so much that we may have to switch it, so however we went ahead to try and secure, if it's possible, a long-term contract, the city would need to maintain some flexibility in that contract, but I don't think that's an undoable part.
The overriding, to me, just the strategic plan, 70% over seven years of our peace agreement money, so to borrow 4 million annual, every year, is a 3%, 3% tax increase to repay the debt over 10 years, so you talk a 3% tax increase each of those years, plus our CPI policy of 2%, so you have an annual tax increase every year, 5% or 6% that you're going to present as part of the program to how you're going to fund it, right? Tercy?
Blair, like, it's these numbers, it's hard to probably predict in four years that it's going to be 8.2 million, but like, when you did these numbers up, like, were they on the higher end, so we're not going to be like, first year, the 8.2 million budget is now 12 million?
I think it's fair to say, and Kevin can jump in, but these are very conservative numbers, we believe that you would probably get more work done, but to be on the safe side, we would rather project high than low, and Kevin, if you had anything to add, but I think all indications are that the amount of dollars could probably accomplish more than what we're predicting, but we want to be on the safe side.
Okay.
Yeah, so Blair, through your worship, I'll just add a couple of things, so again, this is very preliminary numbers, we usually haven't, certainly have any contingency in it, so you're looking at 30% or 40% contingency, because there are unknowns, we're also making assumptions that this is probably every road you're looking at, you're looking at total reconstruction. What we'll do is, before we do any projects, before we design, we'll do geotech investigation to determine whether we have to do full reconstruction, maybe we get lucky, and it really becomes just a nail and overlay, so that would save significant amount of money. So again, we're going into this with worst-case scenario at this stage, and as we design and refine, those numbers will kind of prove out.
I think, to me, the other piece to this, I mentioned at the break, the thing, to me, we've really got impacted this year over our sewer, and so when you talk about you're doing a major road project, that I, to me, the prioritization now for me is also going to be the sewer works, and saying, like, if we've got a, if we need to do a major project for an area to improve the sewer, then it makes sense to prioritize that road, because you're not going to do it separately, and to me now, I got that sewer stuff front and center for me in terms of how we prioritize. To me now, I, I got that sewer stuff front and center for me in terms of how we prioritize roads to do them is, should that sewer component be incorporated into that discussion of how we prioritize it? And that adds another level of complexity because you might then say, we're going to do that one over one that's failed, but we need to get the sewer fixed. So, you know, there's just, to me, there's another piece of this discussion that I think is a part of how we prioritize it.
Very important piece, absolutely.
Paul?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I think the, the main thing here is that we want to approve the borrowing in principle, you know, and how we apply it, I mean, it will have to be refined.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's the, I think that's what Blair's got to move forward with for a direction is, is council considering the component around saying we are prepared to enter into now where we haven't had any borrowing for major capital projects other than the sewer that we did about five years ago. Are we now considering approving borrowing to do major, this major capital program for our roads over the next four or five years, starting in 2022? Counsel Parzol?
Yeah, I keep reflecting on this study that we had done of our road system, and there's very strong recommendations there as to how much needs to be spent every year on maintenance. And we also know, because of previous council having to juggle different balls, that roads got neglected, funding for the canna and K-PAC, you know, the money's got pushed over into those capital budgets. So this is a catch-up, and that's why I like the idea. We have to recognize we're in a catch-up game, and I think this is a good initiative to do that.
Counsel Jevetkov?
Do we need a motion?
Well, I think we need to provide direction, yeah, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the $20 million borrowing over four years.
Beginning in 2022.
Is it in 10?
Yep. Thank you. Do I have a second, or? Counsel Parzol, discussion? Counsel Earl?
So in, by approving in principle, are we just going to see then, when staff brings back our budgets next month, are we just going to see budgets with this $20 million in borrowing? Is that what that motion is committing us to?
It would be into the five-year plan, eh?
Yes, we can do two things. And speaking with Flavia, if this was agreed in principle to move ahead with it, the November 23rd meeting of the draft one budget could bring forward, here's the costs associated with the motion that you're about to speak to or vote on. Here is if you don't borrow the money, here's your cost going forward, here's what the budget looks like, here's what the budget looks like if you approve 5 million a year over four years, beginning in 2022. Is that fair to say, Flavia? We can have that.
That would be my preference, and I just don't know if it was captured in Counsel Jevetkov's motion.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think there's the other component to that is our strategic priority of saying 70% of our Peace River Agreement. We need to then have the corresponding data to say, okay, if we do this borrowing and we build it in, then Flavia's got to build that in, say, then you're going to have a 3% tax increase built into the revenue for the next 10 years to accomplish the repayment of those on an annual basis, plus your CPI. So the council then understands that if we approve the borrowing, you're also approving the corresponding revenue, necessary revenue streams that you're going to have from that, or then you have additional tax or other operational reductions to accomplish that $300,000 or $400,000 annually that's going to mean need for repayment.
Yeah. It's the trust of doing business.
Yeah.
So then, just trying to get the direction, if we vote in favor of this, we're still going to be seeing both versions of that budget or we're just limiting ourselves to one?
Your worship, I think, I, my interpretation of the motion I heard is we approve 20 million in borrowing. Now, if that was the case, we're bringing you one budget that would show that in there. If the intent is to say, look, we think we're there, and that seems to be what I'm hearing, but we'd like to see the numbers with our draft one budget and so on, then I would suggest, and I, you know, if the counselor who moved it would agree that we approve in principle this pending draft, review of draft one budget in November, that may give you the flexibility you're looking for.
You know, and I think honestly, I think, thinking about that, we should do it in principle because council is going to be the ones that's going to approve the budget when they get the financial plan put together for 2021, and building in those revenue projections and the costs. And so we should have that analysis to say, okay, now we're going to present this capital plan to the public, but we're also going to present, you got a 5% or 6% annual tax increase to your residents over the coming five, six, 10 years. That should be part of the discussion to the community.
Mm-hmm. No, I agree with that.
You know, I mean, we can always fold it down later. I think we need to approve it now so it's in the budget so we can see what, what's happening. Now, whether you have two versions of the budget, I prefer one, but, you know, I have a hard enough time analyzing one budget, nevermind two.
Honestly, I think it has to be in principle because we've only got that one set of data in terms of what the capital is. We need to understand what the operating piece is to the budget so that when that's the piece that's going to be the full picket, full picture, right? Counsel Parzol?
Not, not trying to be difficult, but you know, I, my reflection, I understand where you're coming from, I respect it. Where I'm coming from is, what choice do we have? What choices do we have? Want our infrastructure to deteriorate further? So are we going to make cuts in operating? Who knows? So I don't see where we, where we have an alternative, but I'm not against doing the two budget there, right? I'm just, you sitting here reflecting to myself, what options do we have?
All I'm saying is that we have a, the number one strategic priority that this council has set is we're going to move in seven years, 70% of the Peace River Agreement money out of operating into capital. That's the work that council's been undertaking. And so this new work now, this new borrowing, is it going to have an influence in terms of, we said we're going to have a 2% or a 2.5% tax increase, so that changes the revenues that we're going to need to have in order to service that debt, and that may or may not impact that 70% target over seven years that council set. And that's all I'm saying is, we should have that information from our financial CFO so that council can say, I'm, I am in favor of that, support that, and here's the implications of the revenues. That's all I'm saying is the full picture for our number one strategic priority.
Can I?
Yep.
And the 30% is for debt repayment?
Well, the 30% that would be in operations, the discussion over some time now, has been that that 30% would be focused on the debt repayment in the operational side of the budget. Now, there are other things that it can be used for, patching, I mean, that's not a capital, that's an operational requirement, things that meet the requirements of the PRA under the formula as established by the Crown.
Counsel Earl?
No, I mean, realistically, all I was asking for is similar to what Flavia has provided to us in previous years in an Excel document with a little basket of monies in the middle and the various spidering off of different revenue streams and expense, expenses, and two versions of that, basically, one with $20 million in borrowing over four years, one without. And that's, I just wanted to make sure Counsel Jevetkov's motion wouldn't preclude us from seeing that because I think it would be a handy aid for me in doing that compare and contrast and the part of the cost benefit analysis of $20 million in borrowing. As, as his worship said, that, that does potentially complicate our primary strategic goal. So I just, as somebody who's looking for a more wholesome appreciation of what exactly we're committing to, that would be handy for me.
Good. Thank you. Counsel Wilber?
Well, the 30% was already brought up, so thank you. To me, I, I don't want to see two budgets. I think through the process that we've been doing, the budgeting, we have the ability to say, this is what it looks like with, and then make those adjustments on that Excel spreadsheet. We did it over the taxes, we've done it over various things at the last budget process. I don't want to put staff through the work of showing us two different pictures and bringing us two different budgets to look at that. I agree with Counsel Jevetkov. Let's put this in and see what it looks like. We have time to wash it out or change it or whatever we think is best, but I do know that looking at some of these identified areas, these are some of the oldest infrastructure and streets in the community. I happen to live in a house that was built in 1978. They didn't call them modulars, they were tip-ups by the army, but that's when it was built. So many of these areas are some of our oldest streets. The infrastructure's going to, is going to, I, in my mind, need to be updated, and it's going to get more expensive. I would rather see the budget with it in and then let us work through it to see if it will continue to fit. So I, I don't want to put staff through extra work when we've already moved our timelines up. I would just like to, in my mind, I agree with Counsel Jevetkov, let's put it in, let's see what it looks like, and we'll hash it out through the budget deliberations.
And just for clarification, I wasn't asking for two separate budgets from, from my perspective. I just want to make sure that we have the revenue offset to ensure that we demonstrate that if we have borrowing, we have to have a revenue built into how we're going to repay that debt and how that impacts the overall target we've set, and what that means then to our tax rates that we're going to have to have to correspondingly service the debt. And I'm completely good with having the discussion. There is, from my perspective, there's no right or wrong answer here. As Jeremy, Counsel Earl's indicated, the deterioration of the roads are going to cost us, we've seen that, it costs us more money. It's just, it's just the whole picture of, are you going to, how are you going to service it if you borrow? That's all.
I agree.
Okay.
Your worship, and if I could just jump in, and speaking with Flavia and I, we're talking briefly here, should council move with this resolution? And I'll just, the resolution as it's worded, if it passes today, we will bring that forward in the budget, most definitely, but we will bring you an option to show what it would look like without, not an entire budget, but the numbers, I think. Would that be fair to say, Flavia?
Yeah, through your worship. So the budget of November 23rd, the focus is 2021, so that's where the whole detail is going to be. But I will put a special session there about the five years' projection, and then I can show there, by having the 20 billion borrowing compared to a non-20 million by 22, what's the variances. That will be a separate session for that, so then we can visualize it.
I hesitated to word the, use the word easy, your worship, that's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Good job. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a point here, after we get the bids on this project, the budgeting will be very easy, and we'll know how much money we have for other work.
Kevin will be on that. Item eight, bylaws 8.1, we have report number 2198 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our Fees and Charges Amendment Bylaw. Counsel Parzol?
I move the report number 2198 from the Chief Financial Officer, re-fees and charges amendment bylaw number 44642020 be received. Further, the fees and charges amendment bylaw number 44642020 be given first three, the first three readings.
Thank you. Do I have a second, or? Counsel Kemp, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Are you opposed, Jeremy?
No.
Oh, sorry. And 8.2, oh, sorry, 8.2, yes. We have report number 20205 from the City Planner regarding our Annual Business License and Regulation Amendment Bylaw. Counsel Jevetkov?
Move that report number 20 dash zero, dash 205 from the City Planner, re-Annual Business License and Regulation Amendment Bylaw number 44652020 be received. Further, that the Annual Business License and Regulation Amendment Bylaw number 44652020 be given first three readings.
Thank you. Second, Counsel Wilber, discussion? This primarily, one of the major changes contained in this was really about the cannabis licensing, and when we got into this, I think it was two years ago now, I can't even remember, but we had no idea what to expect and anticipate. The legalization of cannabis would carry on other impacts of our bylaw enforcement as it related to distribution, public consumption, home growing, all of those things that were carried within the legislation. And so we put a $2,500 fee attached to the business license for those businesses, not knowing whether it would take a heavy burden of work on them, and it's been really a non-issue. So this really is, and we said that at the time when we put the bylaw in place and we put the fee in place for the bylaw, that we would review it in a year, I think, or a year and a half. And so I really appreciate administration bringing it back, and it has been a non-issue really in terms of the impacts of the legalization of cannabis within our community. And so we're going to bring that buy, that fee back for that business license to an appropriate level like other distribution, like beer stores, et cetera. So that's what this will do today. Did I capture that?
And rooming houses.
And the rooming houses, but the big one here was the cannabis.
Rooming houses.
Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. And 8.3, we have report number 2027 from the Deputy Corporate Officer regarding a highway closure and dedication removal bylaw and a land sale bylaw. Counsel Earl?
I move that report number 2027 from the Deputy Corporate Officer regarding highway closure and dedication removal bylaw number 44662020 and land sale bylaw number 44672020 be received. Further, the highway closure and dedication removal bylaw number 44662020 and land sale bylaw number 44672020 be given first three readings.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Counsel Wilber, discussion? Blair, do you want to give a?
Your worship, this is a piece of property down by the fairgrounds. I think we had looked at it previously. It had been actually closed some time ago. It was a non-used piece of road, had been encompassed into the yards where they had been made bigger, and this is now formalizing that, is really what it comes down to. They've never been used down there, nor would they be in the future. That's why the recommendation is to proceed.
Thank you. Any comments, questions for council? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. That deals with our reports and bylaws, so our next business mayor's business, so just a couple of items I want to update on. I presented, participated in about three panels the week before last or last week, week before last, and one of them was panel, online panel, and it was really about the economic impacts and the economic drivers in the province and how that was handled or dealt with or not in the provincial election. And I, it was really worthwhile, and I really appreciated the opportunity to participate and just have some discussion with the Chief of the Talton, Rick McLean, and past counselor from the Laxcol Lambs, and Bing Drew from past CEO, I think, of Wood Fiber LNG. So anyway, it was really a good, worthwhile exercise and I appreciated the opportunity to be invited. I had a meeting, follow-up meeting, and I've had a number of discussions with Clint Fraser, this Chief Executive Officer of Northern BC Tourism, and it's just really talking about the strategy of tourism, first of all, that destination tourism that they deliver, but we really had a bunch of discussion about the work that, and the initiatives that the City of Dawson Creek have undertaken over the past number of years on our event support tourism. The reason I've been talking to Clint about it is that the Peace River Regional District, and we're starting to undertake some work in economic development out there and how it may impact tourism as a strategic pillar within there. So I just had some really helpful discussion with Clint Fraser of the Northern BC Tourism, and they've certainly been engaged and really supportive of the work that the City of Dawson Creek have done over the last number of years, and more recently, the event support tourism stuff. The second panel I participated on was the Canadian LNG Alliance, and talked about the LNG projects as a key to Canada's economic recovery, and on it was the CEO of Canadian LNG Alliance, Brian Cox, who moderated it, and a gentleman out of Sault Ste. Marie, the CEO of their Chamber of Commerce, and myself, and we talked about how LNG is, and the whole liquefied natural gas industry is influencing and impacting potentially the Canadian economy. And Sault Ste. Marie, and why they were invited in is, Sault Ste. Marie is a real steel manufacturing community, and the headquarters of Teneres. and the headquarters of Teneres is in Sault Ste. Marie. And so when the energy sector takes off, they're the ones producing pipe and all of those components for the energy industry. And they talked about that specifically, about how important the energy development and the energy sector is to Eastern Canada and to them as it relates to, and why the LNG projects were so important. So it was an interesting perspective in terms of that component. Go ahead.
I didn't know that. So that's why the mayor of Sault Ste. Marie is one of the key presenters at many of the FCM things, advocacy. Two and two mates?
Four sometimes. And I was on a-
I thought it was because he was a green environmentalist.
He was, he was, I was on a panel with him about a month ago, Mayor Provinciano from Sault Ste. Marie. And same thing, he was exactly that, talking about how important the sector is. And he said, we absolutely see and feel it in our community. And the city of Sault Ste. Marie, when the energy sector is, is vibrant, we see that impact in our community in Eastern Canada. And I thought the Canadian LNG Alliance have done a really good job of trying to demonstrate that. And then on that topic, about a year ago, I think, or maybe almost, I brought forward to council the request that we send a letter of support to the Energy Saginaw, the LNG facility in Saginaw, Quebec. And they're going through the regulatory process for permitting to build a LNG facility in Saginaw. And so Mayor Gibbons and I put together a letter of support for that project because the project will source their natural gas from Eastern Canada. And we got a number of mayors from Western Canada and Alberta and BC that signed the letter. And we submitted it to the regulator or the commission that are handling the inquiries and the process for the permitting of the facility. And it's called the BAP, which is the Office of Public Hearings for the Environment. And we presented the letter and then Mayor Gibbons and I from Grand Prairie presented to the commission a week ago Friday and gave an update in terms of why the, and it is the intent of Energy Saginaw to source their gas from Western Canada. And it'll be a project the same size as LNG Canada, about 2 billion cubic feet of gas per day. They'll build a pipeline across Northern Ontario into Saginaw that will source Western Canadian gas. And so we, Bill Gibbons, Mayor Gibbons and I did a bit of an update and about a half an hour, we were on the commission and I spoke French and did it very well. No, I didn't. Je m'appelle Mayor. Anyway, it was, it was more about, I think, the support of where we as Western Canada see the benefits of resource development and how we are supporting the energy sector across Canada. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? Good. And one of the things that I always have kind of over the last year really, and I give my credit to this to my son-in-law who's on the board of the United Way of Northern Alberta, and he kind of give it to me about, we should be more involved in United Way, what a great organization and the work they do and helping communities and charities. And I did a little research. I was honestly, I was knocked out about how much United Way have done in our community with different area network ministry, Dawson Creek Art Gallery, Society for Community Living, Spikers, Step Up and Ride, Better Tone. And so I put in an application to serve on the board of United Way, and they had their AGM last Thursday night. And so I'm now gonna serve on the board of United Way as a volunteer to try to help both from the perspective of the region as well as our community to raise the profile of United Way on behalf of the community and region and some of the organizations that benefit from it. So.
Is that provincially or?
Just United Way of Northern BC. So their office in Prince George. And then I think it's Quinell, Williams Lake, out west to the Charlottes, and then up north to Fort Nelson. So I've got two other items I just wanted to raise very quickly. We got a note last week, Flavia come dancing upstairs, dancing, running, that we got a notification from, it was mentioned earlier in the agenda, that we received a notification from the province that as part of the funding that the federal government moved forward in April of this year about COVID relief funding. So it's worked its way through with the province of BC and UBCM. And we were notified that we will get 2.793 million dollars in funding to the city of Dawson Creek as a result of the COVID relief. As Blair mentioned earlier, we had a million, a little over a million in tax relief that we offered this year as part of our initiatives to community and business and residents. We lost close to half a million dollars in gaming revenue in 2020 as a result of chances being closed down. And that sharing of revenue, we'll probably lose that in 2021. Another couple hundred thousand in our loss of revenue from, reduction in revenue from sewer and water and utilities. And our pool is a 3% recovery rate based on the user fees. So on and on and on, transit fees we lost. So we, this, this 2.8 or 2.7 million is going to be a real benefit to our community in the fiscal future, as we've talked about. And we will bring that forward in the coming weeks for council to have some discussion, deliberation, and direction on that funding. And but just huge news for us to be able to get that notification from the province.
Just a question. So just in a broad stroke, the parameters for that is to help the municipality offset some of the costs, whatever they were, related to the Jacoby. Is that, is that correct?
Flavia?
Through your worship, yeah. They are very specific about this, the revenue shortfalls that we had as a consequence of COVID. So that would affect like reductions like we-
Yes.
And they also, any excess of expenses, operational expenses we had as a result of COVID. So extra cost you incurred to cleaning, maintain the facilities open outside from the regular operation, it's covered under.
So like the reduction of revenue at Canborit Arena could be offset by this?
Sorry?
The reduction in revenue that we've experienced because of the Canborit could be offset by this?
Yes, can be offset.
Good, okay.
Yeah, it's 2.78 million dollars that we have now to put into reserves or put into, like just how, how good is that for us? Yeah. And the last, one other one I want to talk about really briefly is, we had the announcement last week that COVID has reached its way into Rotary Manor. And first it was one staff and now we've got the residents and I think seven people. And I think the worrisome piece to me when I hear that, where that's the biggest fear, I think, for all of us is to see COVID reach its way into a seniors facility or into the hospital. And I think it's an awakening, certainly to me, and I think it should be for all of us about community. And this is real. It's, it's gonna have real impacts. And we, I think, have went through the first wave just amazingly well through April, May, June, we recovered. And now it seems the second wave is really upon us. And I think it's just that awakening to me of the diligence for us and ensuring that we do those things about social distancing and mask wearing and where you can't social distance and wash your hands and ensure that we raise that to our community because we can't have our small business community shut down again. And we can't have the impacts to some of those folks who won't recover again. And most significantly into our seniors facility or into our hospital.
You-
Yep, go ahead.
One of the things that scares me is how many people, how many people believe this is a hoax? How many people think this is a conspiracy of government to control more? It's just mind-boggling, the level of thinking of people. My, one of my daughters lives in the Fraser Valley Health. She can't believe, when she's talking to me, what freedom I have up here because we're hardly touched. And we've got to impress upon every organization if we're going to contain this, that we have to be more vigilant. You know, you can go into restaurants now where people are not wearing, waiters are not wearing masks. It's mind-boggling.
Yeah, it's a, it's a real issue. And I think just to me, the, the fact that last week when I, we got the news that it had reached its way into Rotary Manor is a real significant aspect. So I just ask everyone to please be diligent, please be kind, wash your hands where you can, and please social distance where you can. And if you can't, wear a mask. And people who are in, working in the stores and in the retail outlets, they're not asking you to wear a mask because of any other reason, but that's part of their responsibility as an employee. And if they do ask you to be masked, be respectful of them. And wearing a mask is going to be a lot easier than wearing a respirator. I promise you that. We have one other item. We had on a delegation request from item 9.2 was a request from Dawson Creek Aircraft. And Blair, do you want to speak to that?
Your worship, so the request came, they have been leasing this property at the airport. There's a hangar on it since I believe 1967. As Mark had said, it began even earlier than that, the organization. They have a lease agreement with the city and in it has an option to renew the lease. They are five-year increments to renew. The word is "may," which is very important when you're looking at legal documents versus "will" or "shall." When this was due up, it expired, I believe, the 31st of June, I believe. We wrote a letter back saying the lease has expired. We have to renew it if you're interested in renewing it. We then put in the market rate, which was $1.80. It was indicated in their report today, it was $1.82. $1.80 is the number we put back, which is a market rate. We are bound by the community charter, Local Government Act, that we cannot forego market rate on that. So we sent that back. Hence, and I'm giving a little history here, hence we received a letter saying, hey, rather than lease it, we would like to purchase it. I responded based on the policy of council at the time, as of today, that we are not selling airside land, but would entertain a long-term lease. And as a result, they were here as a delegation today with the report they put in. I would note, there's a couple of things that I think are very important. The revised rate of $1.80 was not drawn out of the air. It was achieved by looking at no less than a dozen airports, comparable in size, comparable from Athabasca, Bonneville, Camrose, Cold Lake, Fort Vermillion, High Level, High Prairie, High River, Lacklabisch, Lacree, Lethbridge, Peace River, Slave Lake, Tumbler Ridge. The list goes on. We went through and then working with our airport manager, came out with an amount of $1.80, which is on the favorable side for the leasing. When I look at market rates, an example would be Tumbler Ridge is $2 a square meter for lease at their airport. So we've done that. Their report indicates that we are on the extreme high side. I'm not sure where they received their information. They may have others. They haven't had the opportunity to come and share that with me yet. But I will note that on June 25th of 2015, in a response of the renewal of the lease at that time, it was noted that the average airport lease is currently charged at $1.82. Council of the day made a determination that they would maintain a much lesser rate than that. I don't think that was in compliance with the Act of the Day at that time, and it certainly isn't today. So that's the historical nature of where we're at right now. They did indicate that they, failing the sale of the property, that they would want to renew their lease on the existing terms of the document that is here. I would suggest that that probably is neither doable or legal for the city of Dawson Creek.
Thank you, Blair. So I think the request to purchase the property should be the first item that council deal with in terms of, is it the will of council to consider directing administration to entertain the aspect of selling that property to Dawson Creek Aircraft Limited? Councilor Jevakov?
I guess we could have a discussion about it, but I'm prepared to make a motion that we don't sell it, that we remain on the basis of leasing it. And I can speak to that if we get a second.
Do you have a second, or Councilor Earl? Go ahead.
So we had this, we commissioned a report in 2011 from McElhaney and Patricia Maloney and Associates. And that was on the basis of sustainable, trying to get our airport to a sustainable status. And I'll just read you the one line here. And I have this report on my desktop computer. So if anybody wants it, I can email it to them and they can read the whole thing. But this, this one line, and they state a bunch of objectives, and the main objective is that we somehow reduce the subsidy and get to a sustain, a sustainable level. But regarding the, the objectives, these objectives remain valid today. Had this land use plan been adopted in 1999, it is likely that the airport lands would not have been sold, and there would be more steady annual revenue for the airport in the form of lease or rent. So that's the, the philosophy behind leasing is that you have an ongoing lease fee and overall, long-term, you're benefiting more than you would with a single sale. And there's some information, like the assessed values of this land. For example, the Bailey helicopter hangar that was built about 20 years ago, the assessed value on that property is 106,000. So, you know, that's what you're looking at for a sale. And the, the lots that, that are, the two that have hangers on them, the assessed value is 72,000. And the, just the property alone is 46.6. So, you know, it's a one-time revenue and then that's it. So I, I support maintaining the lease philosophy. And the lease fees on this, I mean, if, if we're still living with the lease fee that was established in 1967 when we entered into it, you know, I mean, we've got some work to do on, on how we handle these leases and the fees, eh?
Thank you. Councilor Gilbert?
Is this the only property or the only lease spot inside the airport facility?
I would have to go and confirm that under land sale. I'm not aware. We've sold some airside previously, as was indicated. This may be the only lease I'm aware of airside.
This is, this is inside the fenced?
Yeah. Yes.
The water store, the other building?
I believe they were sold.
They were sold?
Yeah.
Wait, wait.
I think this is the only one to my knowledge. Councilor Parson?
Well, you know, I talked to Jevakov about this topic because he's the airport liaison person. And he mentioned the recommendation. And he's, he's just explained, right, that the concept is you'll get more revenue from leasing than one-time sale. And, and then we heard that they were looking at moving to, hopefully a permissive tax exemption so we would not get any tax. But what tax we would get, according to Paul's calculations, would be quite small because of the assessment. So I, I'm, I just want to throw another, another curve in here, I'm thinking. As you know, I'm hopeful. I mean, we've, we've seemed to have a spirit of understanding, of reasonableness with our regional district partners. Visa V Recreation. We are moving, we have, I believe, given sort of the direction that we need to move to, it may be a different governance model for the airport. It would be a, maybe possibly a society of some sort where the city's one partner and all the other beneficiaries of having this airport would be part of our partnership. And, and so I'm thinking now, what would they prefer? I think they would prefer a regime that maximizes the revenue to the airport so that the subsidy is, 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 makes smaller. And so I'm thinking that we should sustain the advice given to us. And so I'm thinking that we should sustain the advice given to us, and I think we're given a better platform to be hopeful, you know, cost-sharing regime that we may be able to achieve with the regional district.
Thank you. Blair?
Your worship, just one other, when Mark, Mr. Sutton, was presenting, he mentioned that we had applied a 2% CPI year-over-year. We had actually applied CPI, which hasn't been 2% every year. I think the most recent in 2015 was 1.2. Just, again, just for clarity, that it hasn't been a standard 2% increase over the number of years, it's been CPI.
Darcy? Or sorry, Councillor Dohber?
Thanks. I'll do that 100 times too. In the lease agreement, when they mentioned about the issues with the water and stuff, this is a little off-topic, but is there some risk to the city in the lease agreement that we might be liable to, to look after that if we change this? Like they might come back at the city about the land not being usable for two months of the year, and, you know, that's, I mean, that is the first, when it came in this report, it's the first, unless there was calls, certainly in my involvement here in the last, just about one year now, previous to that on council, I hadn't had that brought to me as a concern. Now, are there ways? We're always looking, not just for these people, but city property, if there's ways to make it work better for everybody that's using it, we're always willing to look at that.
So on the motion to deny the request for purchase, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And on the continuation of the lease agreement, and I think it's evident that we want to continue with a lease, that I think we direct administration to bring back a lease that's, negotiate a lease within the terms of your investigation of what current lease agreement should be, and I don't think we should set the term, I think we should allow administration to go and negotiate that based on what the current market is. Councillor Juaque?
So it's $1.80 a square-
Meter.
-meter? How much is that in total?
I believe it comes to about $7,200, $7,700 a year for the piece of property that's out there. They own the hangar on it, this group owns the hangar that's on that, on that property. So, for instance, under the lease, should they determine to continue with a long-term lease, they can enhance the property, enhance their building. If for some reason they chose not to continue with the lease, there's a clause in the agreement gives them set amount of time to remove the hangar if they so wish, or as in the case, you know, many times, it would revert to the city's ownership.
Go ahead.
So on a hangar with six aircraft in it, that works out to $600?
$1,283.
Huh? Is it?
$1,283 a year per aircraft.
Per aircraft, yeah. So that's basically the cost for leasing, and like I compare it to the horse bars, for example, where storing a horse there is $1,800. It's not, it's not apples to apples, but it's just a comparison. And even RVs storage is, is not cheap either, so I, I don't see if you've got an aircraft to pay $1,200 and some dollars a year is out of the, you know.
If I could, your worship, just, I want to be clear, otherwise, if I was the presenters, I'd come back and say, "That is the cost for the lease, they also carry the cost for the taxes, they do pay taxes on it, and they do carry the insurance as well." So I don't want to, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what the cost on that would increase, it may be $100 or $200 per, I'm just not sure.
I think, to me, the direction I would like to provide to administration is to negotiate a long-term lease under the current market rates that you feel are appropriate. And, and you have, there's some, there's some discretion within there that there may be some things that, they say, "Look, what about leasehold, some leasehold improvements?" As Darcy mentioned, maybe there's some stuff that Blair wants to build into there that we can do. I don't think council wants to set the rate, but set the direction that we negotiate a long-term lease. Blair?
Your worship, I think we may have, as a council, already have adopted the market rate at a previous meeting under a report I put forward, which, so that would be fine, and we can negotiate on that term.
Okay. Councillor Parzl?
I agree with what you're saying, but I would also like to add, and within the parameters of the community charter-
Yeah.
You cannot give subsidies to businesses.
And so as Blair said, I think we've done that within the previous motion, that has to be done within the current market rate, so that covers that then. So you don't need a motion then?
No, I think you've concluded that we are not going to sell it, I, we will, I will enter discussions with the group and see if we can secure a lease with them.
Thank you. Councillor Parzl?
I have another question for you, it was covered in the report. Grand Prairie, do you know what happened to the bylaw? Or the thing that went to the vote of the public concerning building and entertainment added to the arena, you know what I mean?
I think they're just in, they're still in the analysis stage, I don't think they've made a decision as to whether they're going to spend the $50 or $60 million on it.
The community authorized it if they wanted to?
Hmm, I don't know that.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's it for mayor's business. CEO update?
What about the modular, the land? Oh, that's closed, never mind.
Your worship, not a lot to add today.
I need seven minutes.
We have covered a lot of ground today. What I would encourage is residents, as winter sets in on us, the snow is falling, we have a bylaw in place in the city that as you shovel your driveway, I encourage people, don't shovel it out into the middle of the road, our bylaw officers will be touring around town, it does violate the bylaw, and to avoid receiving a fine or disciplinary action, I encourage people to look after it. We run into that challenge every now and again, limited, but we do run into it, so. Other, now, your worship, we have covered a great deal of area here today, and I already spoke on the transit, so.
Thank you. Diary?
Nothing new to report.
Consent calendar, anything, Brenda? Items, motion to report number 2201, to, items to be released? I can have a motion?
So most-
Councillor Wilbur, second, Councillor Earl. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry? Thank you. And strategic priorities?
Nothing at this point, your worship.
Media question? Thank you. And so with recess back to closed. Councillor Wilbur, second, Councillor Earl. All in favor? Opposed?